I now call to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four at six thirty P M. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Kuyas.
Here.
Vice Mayor Colianis.
Here.
Eisner.
Here.
Commissioner Di Donato.
Here.
Commissioner Banther.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Kurt Snare of Saint Timothy Lutheran Church located here in Tarpon Springs. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Lord be with you. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for the gift that you've given us of life, this city that you've given us to live in. Help us to be good stewards. We pray that you would be with us in this time, following the hurricane, to help one another and to heal. We ask that you would be with our leaders, that you would give them wisdom and patience, that you would help them to work together for the sake of the whole. Be with our residents, help them to live well, and protect us from the evil one. Lord, we lift our city, we lift this meeting up to you. We ask all of this in the name of the Most High, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag. To the Republic, which is the next, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A few announcements on tonight's agenda. Item fourteen approved, or item four, excuse me, approve F dot sub grant for Highway Traffic Safety Project CPG dash two thousand twenty-five, City of Tarpon dash zero zero one eight six. That has been deferred to December third, two thousand twenty-four B O C regular session. Item thirty-one, Resolution two zero two four dash five four ratifying election results, November fifth, two thousand twenty-four. There is an addendum. And item thirty-two, Ordinance two zero two four dash zero one, uh, Land Development Code Amendment, amending Article seven, Heritage Preservation and Providing for Creation of Neighborhood Conservation Overlay Districts. Application twenty-two dash one one two Legislative has been deferred to a date certain of December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. We will now go to special presentations. Item number one, status update on hurricane recovery, and we have Fire Chief Scott Young to present.
Good evening, Scott Young, Fire Chief. Uh, just a quick, uh, update where we're at. It won't take that long. Uh, the city's still under a state of local, uh, emergency. We signed that again today, and you'll ratify those, uh, tonight. Uh, so you know, the final day of debris pickup, uh, from our contractor was last Friday. Um, the, uh, uh, landfill will be going back to normal operations, uh, Thursday, correct? Uh, for all residents and contractors. Uh, we are pretty much done picking up debris throughout the city. We've done a very good job getting it all done. Uh, but you'll still see the big piles out at the landfill. That's gonna take, uh, probably up to about Christmas, but we're guessing to get rid of all that. So that's the next step in the big project. Uh, but I wanted to let you all know that. Uh, since October, we've picked up about a hundred and twenty-six thousand cubic yards of debris. Uh, that's mixed debris with the, uh, vegetative stuff and home, uh, debris. We're guessing about a hundred and sixty thousand when all said and done. Permit fees, uh, are still waived for those that are doing work on their homes. So if you have anything you need to do at your home and you need permits, now's the time to come in and get it. Those are for the affected, uh, homes that are, uh, by the storm. Uh, you probably have seen if or not, uh, the building inspectors are out, uh, from Tetra Tech. They're out doing inspections. Uh, as of today, they've done about three hundred inspections throughout the city, and they're continuing doing more. Uh, we'll be waiting to get all the data in. They have to put it through their, uh, uh, programs to see what we have as far as damage, substantial damage, mild damage, et cetera. We're hoping to get those in the next few days or by the beginning of next week, hopefully. Um, and then we'll go for the next step, what we have to do from that point. We are taking, uh, names on a voluntary basis of those who may be interested in getting some, uh, grant money to do ho- uh, stuff to their homes for mitigation. Uh, that's of, we're taking, sending out letters of interest, and they can fill that out and send it back to us, put their names on a list. So we, when the money does come available to us, uh, which could take probably a year to two years before that grant money is available. So it's a long, long process. But we'll keep your name on file, and we'll get ahold of you when that process starts. Uh, again, the citywide cleanup day had, was rescheduled to January twelfth. Um, that's pretty much where we're at. Uh, right now, I don't know how long, many more weeks we'll go with the state of emergency. Uh, we checked with the county. They don't see it stopping, uh, right away. As long as we have, uh, resources in town working and doing recovery efforts for us, we'll keep the, uh, declarations so we stay under the, uh, the guidance for the money. So with that, I'll open it up to any kind of questions you might have.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any public comments on this special presentation? I T, are there any Zoom comments?
If anyone online would like to make a public comment on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you, I T. Uh, stat, or board and, um, questions or in comments for Chief? Commissioner Banther?
Yes, thank you. Uh, Chief, how many homes, if you know, have met that fifty percent threshold that we've been talking about?
That's what we're waiting on for the data to come in from our contractor. Uh, they've been going through the homes. They, they have a, a form they fill out. They put all the in- information into a program of theirs through FEMA, and, uh, that'll come out and tell them that this home, this home, or this home. Uh, once we have that, we'll, you know, get that information to you guys. So we just don't have it yet. No problem. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Uh, Chief, I just want to thank the whole staff. Thank you, uh, Tom, Mr. Funchen, everyone, uh, and everyone involved with this debris pickup. We, you know, we, we set a, a goal of the Saturday before Thanksgiving, and, and you all have beat that tremendously. And, uh, you guys have let it known for the rest of the county and the region that how great of a job you've done in, in setting up all these contracts in place. And ahead of time, we took a lot of criticism to it at the same time, but we understand, and I just can't thank you all enough. And then, uh, being ahead of this, uh, mitigation request with FEMA and stuff, uh, doing a great thing for the residents. So we can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Great team.
Okay, if, uh, thank you. We are now going to go to public comments. Are there any public comments that will not be, uh, earning agenda items this evening? I T, do we have any public comments?
Anyone online would like to make a public comment on items not on the agenda, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you. We will now go to the consent agenda items. Item two is attorney fees. And, uh, two A, Dickman Law Firm invoices, five nine zero two through five nine one six. Item two B, Johnson Jackson P L L C invoice one three eight four five. Item two C, Unisalsman Jensen P A invoices, eight three nine four two and eight three nine four three. Item three, special events. Three A, Light Up the Bayou. Item three B, Tarpon Springs Historical Society's Prewar Motor Show. Item four, uh, which has been deferred. Item five, which is award file number two five zero zero three seven dash N dash A S, single source purchase of hatch equipment and services. Item six, increased file number two, two four zero zero seven nine dash N dash A S, single source purchase of Myers pumps, repairs, and parts. Item seven, award file number two five zero zero three eight dash N dash P H, single source purchase of Fleet Original Equipment Manufacturer O E M parts and services. Item eight, award file number two five zero zero three nine dash N dash P H, single source purchase of Goodyear Auto Service Tires and Services. Item nine, increased file number one nine zero one one five dash C dash C M, equipment rental and related products and services through Omnia Partners contract number two zero one nine zero zero three one eight. Item ten, award file number two five zero zero four nine dash C dash A S, fire protection system utilizing Sourcewell contract number zero three zero four two one dash J H N. Item eleven, increased file number two three zero zero seven nine dash B dash A S, cartridge filters for reverse osmosis water treatment facility. Item twelve, award file number two five zero zero five three dash C dash P H, purchase of city vehicles for fiscal year two zero two five, utilizing Sourcewell contract numbers zero nine one five two one dash N A F and zero three two eight two four dash N A F. Item thirteen, increased file number two three zero one five five dash C dash P H, H vac equipment installation service, building control systems, and related products and services, utilizing National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance. Now, Omnia Partners contract number zero two dash one two three. Item fourteen, award file number two five zero zero two three dash N dash P H, purchase of beverages for resale golf course snack bar. Item fifteen, increased file number two three zero zero two two dash C dash J L, utilizing City of Saint Petersburg I F B number eight four three five, lighting services, holiday displays. Item sixteen, approved First Amendment to Extend, file number one nine zero one three zero dash P dash J L, health benefits, brokerage, and consultant services. Item seventeen, award file number two five zero zero five four dash C dash J L, Global Standards Suction Pump Trailers through Florida Sheriff's Association Cooperative Purchasing Contract, number F S A two three dash E Q U two one point zero equipment. And item eighteen, satisfaction release of liens. Commissioners, are there any agenda items that you would like to pull? Commissioner Eisner?
Um, I don't know if I want to pull it. I would do want to make comments on a couple, so I, I don't want to stall it, so I'll try to. The only one I really want to pull is seventeen. How's that?
Sure.
But I do want to make comments on a few of the others.
Okay. Commissioners, any other agenda items? Okay, we will now go to public comments on consent agenda items two through three B, and five through sixteen and eighteen. Are there any public comments on those consent agenda items? I T, are there any Zoom comments?
If anyone online has any comment on those items, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items two A through three B, five through sixteen, and item eighteen.
So move.
Second.
Okay, now, um, Commissioner Eisner?
Yes, um, Mr. Keiger, quick question. Um, number six and number nine, aren't those reimbursable through FEMA? Because it just shows that we're just spending the money, but they're all FEMA-related.
I couldn't speak to number nine. That's a Public Works item, but yes, number six is, um, is, uh, for pumps, yeah, that's largely related to, you know, damages incurred to lift stations and things like that. We'll be submitting for FEMA reimbursement.
Right, so it, it's not that we're just spending the money. That's what I wanted the public to know. This is more so what we had to do to satisfy, you know, the, uh, the damage that was done, and we have to replace, correct?
Yes, it's directly related to damaged equipment.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, I don't think I have anything then else. Um, you wouldn't be covering seventeen also, would you? Nope, 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 you're not. So then we go over to number nine. That would be...
Uh, Mr. Funchen?
Same question, different department head.
On seventeen, on replacement of the pumps?
Number nine first.
On number nine, yeah, same thing.
Same thing. We just, this is us laying out money, and FEMA will be reimbursing us. Okay.
Hopefully, hopefully.
Well, I understand. Um, I just want people to know that it's, it's not a, it's not an expense. Um, seventeen?
Yep.
Is, that's a, a direct replacement?
On these pumps, yes.
Okay.
The pumps, these pumps are, are we had for years, wearing down. We gotta replace the pumps.
Okay, that was it. Thank you. I'm good.
Thank you. If there are no further comments, uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Di Donato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Kuyas.
Yes. We will now go to item seventeen, award file, award file number two five zero zero five four dash C dash J L, Global Standard Suction Pump Trailers through Florida Sheriff's Association Cooperative Purchasing Contract, F S A two three dash E Q, E Q U two one point zero equipment. Commissioner Eisner?
Yeah, he's already answered the question, though, but thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, uh, the Chair will entertain, oh, excuse me. Are there any public comments on item seventeen? I T, are there any Zoom comments?
And if anyone online has a comment on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Hearing none, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve, um, aw, item seventeen, award file number two five zero zero five four dash C dash J L.
So move.
Second.
There are no further comments. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Di Donato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Kuyas.
Yes. We are now going to business items, formerly known as special consent agenda. We are on, um, item nineteen, approved contract for city attorney services between Dickman Law Firm and City of Tarpon Springs. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the version of the agreement that's in the agenda, unfortunately, is not the final version. Uh, my office, uh, did not catch this. Um, we review the agenda when it comes out. I believe it came out on Friday. Um, and this is not the version that, uh, should be in here. I did circulate it to you all this afternoon, but I believe that the public deserves a right to see it. And for that reason, I, I don't think that you should take action on this. Um, and then some other issues have come up that, um, we may, I may have to address with, uh, the City Manager and Mr. Salzman.
Okay, um, board with, uh, any, would, would anyone like to make a motion to defer this to another, to a later date?
Yes, I, I would make that motion to defer to a later date.
Can I, is there a second?
Second.
There are no further comments or discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Di Donato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Kuyas.
Yes. We are now going to item twenty, Appointment of Public Art Committee. Uh, Ms. Jacobs, can you take it from here?
So currently, uh, there are three vacancies on the Public Art Committee due to the resignation of Joan Jennings, Graham Jones, and Nicholas Toth. Also, um, there's been a vacant position on alternate two, which we have no applications on file. We're recommending that the current alternate, Katie Taylor, um, be moved up to fill one of those positions. And then it would be up to the commission to determine, um, whether, which term, which unexpired term she fills. Um, this, they will still be opening, so we're desperate, in need of still, uh, an additional two board members if you do this this evening, and, and, and then, uh, two alternate members. Uh, so with that said, uh, you know, this would provide them to have a quorum because their board is required to meet at least once quarterly. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, are there any public comments on this item? I T, are there any Zoom comments?
If anyone online would like to make a public comment on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, uh, back to the board.
I'm sorry, sir. We did have a late raised hand, if you'd allow me to let it, let them in.
Yes, please let them in.
If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Juliana Davis, four thirteen East Oakwood Street, Toppen Springs, Florida. Um, I'm looking forward to the art, um, committee getting back on board and working because I'm looking to do more art projects in the communities around Toppen Springs. So I thank you all for addressing this issue that's, uh, um, at hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we do not have any other raised hands.
Okay, back to the commission. Uh, the Chair will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we move current alternate number one, Katie Taylor, to fill the unexpired term of Joan Jennings, which expires October thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Second.
Okay, if there are no further comments? Uh, I'm, I'm gonna make one. I'm, I'm gonna support this, but as we talked about before, and, you know, as I, you know, we do, the board members do the work under the direction of the Board of Commissioners. Um, if I, if I do see, and as I talked about with Ms. Taylor, if I see any agenda that's self-driven and not in the best interest of the community or the mission statement of the community, um, I won't hesitate to bring up an agenda item to remove you from the Public Art Committee. I want projects grouped together, and, uh, certain projects have been done and completed and fulfilled. And bringing them up again at some point is, you know, they've been tabled and, and they've moved forward with that. So that's all I'm gonna say about the issue. There are no further comments? Commissioner Banther?
I just have one question. This is part of me being, well, not new, but new, 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 new for this term, is why, why were all these, why did, I think I have an assumption, but I don't want to assume, all these people resigned? I mean, Joan Jennings is known. I don't know Mr. Jones. Nicholas Toth is a, is a significant person, and then we have no applicants. Is it, is it because of the, I don't know how to say it politely, but the drama that happened? I mean, is it, is, or is this just the bigger picture as a whole, that we're having trouble getting applicants for all boards? I mean, how can they meet? They have a quorum?
Well, uh, City Clerk, can you answer that, please?
Yes. So the reason why we, we really can't tell you, we don't know.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as, and why they all resigned at around the same time, again, we don't know. Um, as far as the applications, we, uh, do put public notices out there. We post it online. We try to post it in every available spot, uh, homeowners associations, garden club, chamber. Uh, we try to put it out there, so we are, we are in need for some boards to ha, get, you know, fill those positions. Uh, we're hoping we would get some Citizens Academy members now again. Um, but as far as their, the quorum, um, we, we have two, we had two, up until tonight, we had two regular members and an alternate. And when, in the absence of, um, a quorum, it would go to the next applicant, and three is a quorum of their membership.
Okay.
Um, and they're only required to meet quarterly, which they just recently met. And from my understanding, they won't be meeting again until after January, I believe, or after January.
And thi, and this is, this is, this is Ms. Taylor, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, well, I don't believe it's for lack of advertising. I know that for a fact. So I'm, I'm getting the sense there's things, reasons why not to be discussed today probably are, are like, are like tonight. So, um, I'll talk to you offline, Irene, okay? All right, thank you.
There are no further comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Di Donato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Kuyas.
Yes. Item twenty-one, increased file number two four zero zero six seven dash C dash A S, water meters and associated parts, utilizing Hernando County contract number two three dash T S zero zero one nine four dash nine four. And, uh, we have Tommy Keiger, Public Services Director, to present the item.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Kuyas, uh, members of the board, um, I'm Thomas Keiger. I'm the Public Services Director, and we have an item for you today. Uh, this is a contract extension with Ferguson Waterworks. They're a supplier for Neptune meters. We have been standardized on, uh, Neptune meters in the water utility for over ten years now. And, uh, they're the sole source supplier, so we're requesting an, uh, extension of a hundred thousand dollars to this contract to continue to procure, uh, Neptune meters to, for replacements and for our annual meter replacement program, uh, as well as parts and repair services related to the meters that we have in the, in the meter population currently.
Thank you, Mr. Keiger. Uh, are there any public comments on this item? I T, are there any Zoom comments?
If anyone online would like to make a public comment on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Hearing none, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve, uh, agenda item twenty-one, increased file number two four zero zero six seven dash C dash A S.
So, second.
Commissioner Eisner, with comments?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Um, is, is any of these, are we expecting to have? Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Um, is, is any of these, are we expecting to have a larger amount of, of water meters breaking due to the fact that so many of them went into saltwater?
Um, they're generally designed to be, to be waterproof. Um, you know, we, we have had a little bit of an increase, uh, that we've noticed in, uh, uptick, uh, in meter repairs, you know, largely because of trees coming down and things like that and roots pulling up meters and that sort of thing. Uh, but largely this is related to just us trying to focus on, uh, maintaining the health of the meter population and, uh, revenue recovery and maintain the financial health of the utility.
The only thing I would ask is if you can just, you know, lightly, just figure what we used last year versus this year as it comes about. So if it is something that we could turn over to FEMA to get reimbursed for as well, we should be looking at every avenue to get, you know, whatever is extra per se. That's all.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further comments, uh, City Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kulianis?
Yes.
Mayor Kulias?
Yes. Item twenty-two, employee bonus. We have, uh, City Manager Charles Redd to present.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we did confirm, uh, with our labor attorney that we cannot give a cash bonus, uh, or a Christmas bonus. It's best just to not go there. We don't already have a bonus policy in place. But we can give, uh, PTO. So we included, um, a draft MOU. We would need a M, MOU approved by the unions for additional hours. Uh, and so you could either, you have the option of just saying, you know, sixteen hours for non-union and the appropriate hours for two shifts for union and dispatchers. And that would sort of be a blanket cover if you didn't wanna do specific dates, um, which would, if, if we had a specific date, it would close City Hall for another day. This way the employees could just use those hours at, at their discretion. It would add to their bank.
Okay, okay. Are there any public comments on this item?
Anita Protos, nine oh one Bay Shore Drive. Did I hear you right? The labor attorney said you, the city cannot give any type of a bonus or Christmas bonus to the employees.
Well, we, we cannot give a, um, bonus related to hurricane work that's already done.
Okay.
And I said, what about just a, we decided to give a Christmas bonus this year? And her advice was not to go there because we don't have a Christmas bonus policy in place. And it just be, it'd be better if we just provide time off.
Gentlemen, you need to get a bonus, uh, program in place for these employees because it's well deserved.
Thank you, Mayor Protos. Uh, because this can go many different ways, we're, uh, we're gonna go into a discussion for a moment. Uh, Mr. Rockline, go ahead. Sir, sorry, sorry, I didn't see you.
Doesn't matter to me. Robert Rockline, seven fifty-five North Lake Boulevard here in Tarpon. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Commissioners, Senior Staff. Uh, as some of you may know, I was a municipal employee for just over forty years in various capacities, mostly kind of middle management per se. Uh, I was hourly, I was salaried, I was everything, all of the above. I've worked in several major emergencies. And, uh, I was saddened to hear, uh, that, that finding about the cash bonus because a lot of people say time is money. It's really not. It's not as tangible as a trade-off. There's benefits to both. I was a union delegate for twelve years in the police department. If there's a way to repackage, repurpose something, whether it's after New Year's and it's a spring bonus or an Easter bonus or, uh, Epiphany Bonus or something of that nature, you have to remember that all these people gave and do give before they receive back. Most people only get paid after for what you worked before. Uh, all I can say is what I observed here in this city during this and, and some previous storms, uh, both with the emergency services, police and fire and public works and pretty much everybody I saw that had a Tarpon Spring truck or shirt or whatever was over and above. And I know how wearing and tearing it gets on the body. I know that it takes away from their family and their own personal needs, especially during emergencies like this. So if there's any way, and I'm happy to explore with you or sit down with any, the labor attorney or anything else, to give both, that was my original intent, was saying here, to give them both time and money. Uh, because they're equal in some ways, but unequal in others. So, uh, I, I just implore you as someone who's sat on both sides of the coin, uh, it's, it, it's not impossible in, in great likelihood and, uh, you know, is something over and above should be done because something over and above was done by each of them, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rockline. Are there any other public comments? IT, are there any Zoom comments?
If anyone online would like to make a public comment on this item, please raise your hand. You'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any public comments at this time.
Thank you. Uh, back to the commission for discussion. Oh.
Mayor, if I could just say one thing.
Absolutely.
Uh, on the MOUs on the backup, it has a date of, it done for the contract employees by January of twenty twenty-five. That'll be almost an impossibility for us. Uh, you're talking a couple, eight weeks from now. Uh, we were just asking, Fire Chief and I in agreement with this, that you dated to January of twenty twenty-six to give us a year to fulfill that.
Sure, sure. Uh, when we make a motion, someone can include that amendment in the motion. Uh, back to discussion. Commissioner Banther, you were first?
Yes, thank you. Um, and again, uh, this is, if this is all we can do, that's, that, that's, that's, that, that's, that's, that's acceptable. But this is gonna set a standard. It's not gonna be our, our, our last hurricane, obviously. So I wanna get this right. Um, uh, City Manager, did the labor attorney opine that we aired in Irma?
Uh, she didn't give an opinion on that, yeah.
Why not?
Uh, I, I don't wanna quote her, but she said she don't, doesn't know, uh, how it was done in twenty seventeen, but that the statute, uh, the way it reads, she interprets as we.
Who's our, who's our labor attorney?
Um, Aaron Jackson.
Okay. Again, not an issue I wanna get too contentious on, but this doesn't smell right to me. Not there's anything purposely going wrong. I think there might be some, I don't know. I, I don't, I don't wanna say that. Um, it's just, if, if, if we aired in Irma, which is possible, we're humans, right? Then that's acceptable. We acknowledge that was a mistake and this is how we have to do going, going, going forward. I just find it odd that that wasn't considered in this opinion. I'm not an attorney. I don't know labor law whatsoever, but that doesn't make any sense to me. So I'm, I'm fine supporting this. It's better than nothing. But I would like something in writing to the commission from, from the labor attorney that gives her opinion on that because this does set a standard. And I just, again, I said two weeks ago, we get sued for, for like, you know, for, for like, for like, you know, looking, looking the wrong, the wrong, the wrong, the wrong way. So I don't understand that what we did in twenty seventeen, all of a sudden now isn't allowed. We don't have, is there, is there a change in statute? Is there a change in case law? Is there reasoning? So I do expect from staff, when, when we get opinions from, from the city attorney or from the labor attorney, when we have been doing things at a, 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 a certain way, we need to know, have we aired in the past? Or is this just her opinion? Or did she not wanna research the issue? Or is this her safety default, which I know happens a lot in, in, in illegal cases? Regardless, I, I will support this tonight, but I, 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 I would like for her to, to, to clarify her, her, her opinion as to why we can't do this, okay?
Understood.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I agree with the first two speakers that came up in public. I agree with Commissioner Banther, what he just said. I would like to take it one step further. I would like to know who made the decision back in twenty seventeen, um, to do that. And in addition, I would like to ask the labor attorney if there is a way to change, if we don't have a policy to give bonuses, then I want to, at this point, put an agenda item in at the next meeting on us having a bonus procedure, if that's legal or not. Um, because as Commissioner Banther just said, this is not our last hurricane. This is bad, um, this is bad staff publicity. This is, i- i- it hurts them. Um, it hurts me to have to vote on something like this. I know they all gave their all. Um, it, it's just wrong on every which way, shape, and form. And if there's any way we can not break the law, but still be able to fulfill, um, I, I don't care what we have to call it, whether it's a future bonus, a future, you know, maybe we can call it the end of the hurricane season Christmas bonus. I don't really care. Um, but whatever it is, we should be doing it. Um, and I would like to have a vote on that as an agenda item coming forward after the labor attorney says this is okay to do. Um, I'm okay changing policy.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Eisner. Commissioner DiDonato?
Uh, yes, this is a perfect example of, of the meeting that I'm waiting to have. And that's some policies and procedures. We kind of tabled it so that, uh, you could get on board and go forward. And this, this could maybe take, be taken care of, uh, attorney-wise with a policy or a procedure that we have that states such. It gives us a little solid ground, but we're also maybe gonna come up on a, a break here in a few minutes that we don't really need. And I wanna see that changed in policy and procedure as well. So if, while we're gonna bring something forward, I have no problem with doing that the next meeting, but let's have our policy and procedures meeting too, so that we can change some of these things that need to be looked at.
Thank you, Commissioner DiDonato.
And Mayor, you have, um, Paul is looking at all of the policies and procedures of all of our boards and committees and just kind of creating a spreadsheet so we, we can look comprehensively at, uh, they all have different enabling ordinances and some have bylaws and, so we're gonna look at comprehensively of this commission and all the boards and commissions of the city. So we'll, we'll, we're preparing that for you now.
Thank you. No, that'd be, uh, good to look at the departments and how they're structured individually. I appreciate it. Uh, before there is a motion, we, we already have direction given to, uh, have the attorney opine on the situation back in two thousand seventeen, as well as possibly create, uh, a bonus, a couple bonuses for the employees to have in, uh, their label agreements and possibly present it at the, the next B O C meeting. Uh, with that said, uh, the Chair will entertain a motion, um, first, and please include the amendment regarding the, um, M O U for the Fire and Police Department.
Mode, um, I'll go ahead and do it. Um, let's motion to approve, well, I guess we gotta state it out here. That will give, let's see here, it is non-union employees get December twenty-third. Are we doing December twenty-third and December thirty-first? That's not either or, right? Is that together or no?
You could just give sixteen hours and then.
I can just say sixteen hours for non-union employees?
The department heads will sort of manage the time off.
Then I would motion to give non-union employees sixteen hours of PTO as well as, um, the M O U for the police and fire unions to be dated by January, January twenty twenty-six, if that motion makes sense, does it? Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second by Commissioner Eisner. There are no further comments. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kulianis?
Yes.
Mayor Kulias?
Yes. Item twenty-three, discussion on freebie transportation, sustainable way to explore the city, community-driven, and eco-friendly. This item is presented by Commissioner Eisner.
Thank you, Mayor. So when I was in Florida League of Cities, um, I saw a presentation on freebie. Um, and, uh, we do have in the backup a presentation that Dunedin did. Um, they asked if I wanted to do my own presentation. What I'm really looking to do is get feedback if this is something the commission wants the city manager to, um, go ahead with. And we could do this in as much or as little as we so see fit. So what freebie is, it's like a little jitney and it'll, you can have it either move people around just in town. So we could have something where, um, if you're at the Sponge Docks and you wanna go to downtown Tarpon, have you can just, uh, give it a call and it'll come and move you over there, uh, vice versa. Um, it can go the other way. Um, it, it can also be made so that it goes on a, on a direct route. You could make it where it's, uh, brings people to, let's say, somewhere in, in, in the downtown area. Um, it's free to the people, um, that use it. It has the costs that are involved is supplemented by advertising on the side of the, uh, these little jitneys. It's a chauffeur-driven vehicle. Um, there is deals that you could have where you are allowed to tip and that's usually a cheaper for the city, um, if tips are allowed. If there's no tipping allowed, it's more cost, uh, to the city to, uh, pay this. Um, you can have them certain hours. You can have them certain days. We could just try this on a trial basis, just to see how it works out on the weekends. Um, it would be excellent if people wanna use this to go out and maybe have some drinks in town and don't wanna have any sort of, um, issue with our police force driving home. Could be handled like that. So this is something that is, it's just, they're willing to work with us on anything that we wanna come up with. Uh, like I said, I don't wanna make that decision of what it is, but, um, in speaking to it, I really didn't see any negatives to it. Um, I did try to speak to, um, some people at the Sponge Docks to see if that would be something that would be, um, wanting to be done with their area as well. Like, you know, we can have it where, um, businesses, uh, could kick in some money if they want and to have it be where, um, our residents have the ability to, um, go to the Sponge Docks or go to downtown and it's either supplemented by, um, our funding or, um, donations. So, uh, you know, and actually one of the other things was possibly even to have it where we can utilize some of the CRA funds. Um, I don't know. You know, again, these were just all brainstorms that I had and, uh, I, I just think it's, there's nothing better that would, you know, rejuvenate our downtown and our, you know, Sponge Docks. I know some of, uh, the issues that people complain about is that they don't wanna, this is our residents now speaking. They don't wanna pay to park at the Sponge Docks. That's for tourists. And, you know, that, and, and some of them say, look, I'd go there if I could find a spot or not have to pay. This could be that thing. So, um, I, I'm just, like I said, I'm willing to listen to what every, everybody says. Um, that's pretty much it. I mean, we, we could bring them in and they'll decide how many cars they'll give us. Um, they could be electric cars. They could be, uh, gas cars. Um, but it's, it's really, it's a, it's a great program. Dunedin is using it. Uh, I know it's being used in a number of other places. It, it's the future. So let's see how we could, you know, greet it. And I also know that, um, I think one of the Commissioners also had seen it going somewhere. He was out eating and I noticed it, that he had posted. It was something he was interested as well. Uh, Commissioner, Vice Mayor, um, so I'm sure you'd like to speak about it as well and see. I, I just think it's a plus all the way around. And, you know, I've looked at it. They charge about a hundred some odd thousand dollars a year. And, but they have, like I said, all kinds of deals, whether you, you know, we don't have to make any of the money on the advertising. We could, you know, rejuvenate all the money back into the, uh, the vehicle. So I, I don't think it'll be that much and I think everybody would really enjoy it. So we'll see where it goes.
Appreciate you bringing this up for discussion. Uh, next we'd have Commissioner DiDonato?
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure which way I lean on this is, is, is a, is a, an idea, but I need a lot more information and, uh, maybe we can bring it back in, in December, January. Uh, but I, I would wanna know, my primary concern would just be how much money that's gonna cost, um, because of the budget restraints that we are currently having. Um, I just need more information, but I would be interested in hearing that, so.
Thank you, Commissioner DiDonato. Uh, Commissioner Banther?
That, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Eisner, for, for bringing this up. It's, I know we've talked about it in theory in the past, but these things are becoming more readily available. Uh, I, I joked that I'm not sure I could even fit this vehicle, but I've realized the average person is smaller than me, so that's fine. Um, some of, some of my main concerns, um, not concerns, but things I would want when we, when, when we discuss this, if the city manager could get the information from Dunedin, um, I, I, I'm, you know, assuming this is completely third-party from a liability standpoint. It's not a city employee driver. That's my main concern. What's being done to protect the driver? I don't wanna be drastic and, you know, say we gotta put Plexiglas up, but, you know, basically what has Dunedin's experience been as far as liability goes? How have they mitigated that? And, you know, how has it worked for them? they mitigated that? And, you know, how has it worked for them? Um, that's a bigger concern of mine, e- even, even over cost. I, 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 I just want to make sure if we consider this, that we know what our liability is. Um, but I think it's, it's worth, it's worth, it's worth talking about. I have heard of the need of this. Um, I, I just want to make sure that we're covered, uh, on this. And if we did it, we did it in the same way that, um, that Dunedin did. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Banther. Vice Mayor Kulianis?
Thanks, Commissioner Eisner, for bringing this. It's, um, yeah, it's coincidental that last week I was, uh, eating at, uh, Casatina's in Dunedin. And during the hour that I was with my wife in that restaurant, that thing came by about every ten minutes. Uh, it was always loaded with people. They were moving them all around Dunedin. Uh, I think they must have had multiple ones, because I don't think it could have gone by that many times. Um, I think this is definitely worth handing off to the city manager to explore and find out all the details so we can, he can answer all these questions that the commissioners have, have, uh, presented. And I think that, um, it, it meets our strategic plan. It meets our sustainability plan. This is, you know, really what the kind of thing we need, whether it's exactly this project or, or something, uh, similar, you know, to be able to link our downtown with the sponge docks and even, um, you know, uh, going out to the beaches. Um, really, I think it's, and, and it creates a, uh, an ability for people to park a little bit outside, uh, but yet be able to get around and, and to visit all of Tarpon Springs. So, um, yeah, and it was cool. And it would fit, um, Commissioner Banther. It, it's bigger than it, than it looks. So, um, but we'll, we'll, that'll be our challenge. So, all right, anyways, but I think it's a great idea and I think it's something worth, um, at least handing off to the city manager to get us the details we need to be able to consider it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Eisner?
Yes, thank you. I apologize. My computer was, uh, actually redoing something and I, I didn't have any of the backup to speak about. But, um, just to give you some ideas, because I know some of the questions were brought up. Customer satisfaction is ninety-nine point six percent. It's five-star. Um, they have three vehicles over in Dunedin. Um, thirty-three percent of them are contacted through an app. Uh, sixty-six percent of them are flagged down. Um, so you, people actually see it and just can, you know, contact them. Um, the people are riding to downtown shopping, restaurants, bars, hotels, Marina. Um, uh, there's, um, let me just see, there is eighty-six percent of the people recommend continuing this program. It was a trial program. Seventy-four percent of them users believe that the route is convenient. They use a route system. Um, eighty-four percent support allowing advertising on the vehicles. Um, you could control how many hours these vehicles are out there. So if you only want it in a busy, you know, time, you can do that. Um, eighty-seven percent believe the drivers are professional and courteous. Eighty-five percent would recommend their service to a friend. Um, eighty-four percent feel the service is extremely comfortable and clean. Two-thirds have used the service multiple times. So, um, they're clean, they're nice, they're new. Um, the price I saw here for a six months, um, and it's, let's see, it's, it goes by the hours. So they will give you two thousand seven hundred and thirty hours for a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars for six months. Now, mind you, I don't know if that is with the advertising or not. Um, annual, if it's a whole year, they're doing, uh, two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. But, you know, I know that may even sound like a lot of money, but in the fact of, um, people freeing up and being able to get out and utilize our town and spend money in our town, it will come back to us in, in spades. Um, they have also, um, you know, heavy-duty usage where you have eight thousand a- annual hours and that runs three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Again, you know, we could supplement this with some of, some money from the C R A. Um, we could supplement it by people wanting to get involved in this and possibly having, uh, restaurants or stores saying, you know, I'm interested in this and I think it'll bring more business, uh, from people around town. So then the last one is ten thousand annual hours. And it's, uh, most of these prices I'm giving you is a fifty-fifty split between the city and the freebie. So these are numbers that the city makes fifty percent of the advertising and freebie makes fifty percent of the advertising. Again, I would encourage us to not take the fifty percent advertising. I don't think we need it as a money-driven thing. I think we should put it all back in. So to make it as cheap as it can be for the city. And, uh, you know, cost recovery, um, there is grant opportunities. Um, hotels might want to get involved with this, um, you know, and we could possibly even ask our, uh, public transportation, you know, uh, to, to kick in. Because I know they wanted to do something for a while. I remember being, uh, when I first was a commissioner, we went to look at Dunedin for, uh, something and a, uh, unmanned freebie, which I wasn't really too fond of. It was a pretty jerky type of ride. So, um, there's a phone number here, there's a managing partner. Um, I would encourage, you know, it's not a, a rush thing, but it would be great to have some sort of a, you know, an idea of what we would like to do and, and see about going forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Eisner. City Attorney, your light is on?
Yeah, um, real quickly, um, uh, you might also want to do some research with the folks at St. Pete Beach. They've been partnering with Freebie for a number of years. Uh, our firm did do the contract with Freebie. Um, just some points of interest over the years that I, that I was involved in it was, uh, having to do with the advertisement, uh, tipping, uh, the app and how it's being used. Also the power, the powering stations, where, where are they? And who pays for that? So, you know, it's all, it's all, the, the details are all in the contract, but they, as well as Dunedin, I'd encourage you to reach out to St. Pete Beach and see what their experience has been with it. Oh, and also I know that they're trying to introduce the Tesla, uh, as part of their fleet as well.
Thank you, City Attorney. Uh, Vice Mayor, your light is on? I think it's great discussion. I, I think as a, if this can be presented to us in a board with numbers with, as we see with seasonal or, uh, be open for discussion at some point. We've talked about the last budget, being able to, uh, create maybe a purchase of a vehicle or two to shuttle people back and forth between the sponge docks and downtown. So it's all connected and, and trying to get everyone to enjoy, um, two of the, uh, historic and tourist-driven parts of town. So I definitely would like to bring this forward, at least for discussion, to look at everything. And, um, maybe this might be a, a one-year thing where we can at least test it out and, and see. But, um, I think it's important to get people to connect between those areas as well and other parts of town. So, um, City Manager, you have a direction and discussion to possibly bring this forward soon or, or look over everything the next couple of months or meetings? Thank you, sir. Um, okay, that ends item twenty-three. Uh, we have six minutes left before our ordinances and resolutions. Um, we're gonna take a, a recess for about six minutes. Is that okay, Board? Okay, uh, meeting in recess until seven-thirty. The public hearings begin at seven-thirty P M. Item twenty-five is resolution two-zero-two-four dash five-zero, budget resolution for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. Mr. Herring, Finance Director, will be presenting the item.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Ron Herring, Finance Director. Uh, budget resolution two thousand twenty-four dash fifty is being brought before you to budget for items that were not previously budgeted for in fiscal year twenty-four. That's the previous fiscal year. It's a final resolution for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. I've put the major items to the budget resolution in, uh, in the cover letter there. They consist of risk management, funding, hurricane helene expenditures, which will get hundred percent reimbursement, and some city attorney fees were the major items. And then, then there was a bunch of smaller items in there. So, any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. Uh, are there any public comments on this item? I T., are there any Zoom comments?
If anyone online would like to make a public comment on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Uh, hearing on, the chair will entertain a motion to approve resolution two-zero-two-four dash five-zero. Second. Okay, there are no further comments. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kulianis?
Yes.
Mayor Kulias?
Yes. We're now going to item twenty-six, resolution two-zero-two-four dash five-one, interfund loan for debris removal. And we have Finance Director Ron Herring to present.
Uh, yes, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, we're asking for the board's approval for, uh, resolution two thousand twenty-four dash fifty-one. The current estimate for debris removal is five million dollars. The debris removal is a hundred percent FEMA reimbursable. Uh, the city is, um, we have filed for the expedited funding since we're over the one million threshold through FEMA. That means the city can get, you know, fifty percent of the five million, two-point-five million of the estimate. They say within one to three months. Um, we've done all the paperwork. The sub-grant was approved by the state. So they say the payment is in process, but, um, I'm hoping to see it soon, the money, the two-point-five million. Um, like I say, resolution two thousand twenty-four fifty-one is asking the board's approval to borrow the money from the hospital two thousand forty-one seventy fund to cover the balance if we need it to get, until we get reimbursed from FEMA. Uh, the, as the FEMA reimbursement will come in, we would reimburse the fund that we borrowed the money from. And after that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. Are there any public comments on this item?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, um, Madam Clerk, do we need to read, we need to read these into the record?
That's correct. We need to read the title.
All right. So, let me just read the title. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs authorizing an interfund loan for up to, uh, three million dollars from the hospital lease twenty forty-one dash twenty seventy fund and up to, uh, one million dollars from the sidewalk improvement fund to the sanitation fund for debris removal from hurricanes Helene and Milton, providing for scribner's errors and an effective date.
Thank you, sir. Are there any public comments on this item? I T., are there any Zoom comments?
If anyone online would like to make a public comment on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you. Questions from Board members to Mr. Herring. Uh, Commissioner Banther?
Yes, thank you. I, I just want to first off say thank you, Ron, for how you've always guided us through all these things. And just to help reiterate, reiterate your point, you know, I've been big on the reserve since probably twenty-eleven.
And just to help reiterate your point, I've been big on the reserve since probably twenty eleven, twenty ten. And this is a great example how, you know, we're going to be spending five million dollars. And we didn't even get hit direct. Imagine if we had a direct hit. So in the future years, when these hurricanes hopefully become in the back of our minds, hopefully it's not an annual event, that we realize that it could have been much more and it can be much more. So it's very important that we keep our 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 reserves healthy and when possible, above the charter requirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Banther. Vice Mayor?
Ron, let me, let me ask you, why aren't we using, just going directly to our reserve funds?
Are you?
Are the eight million that we have in reserves, why aren't we going directly to the reserve funds?
We could use that. We, it has been a lot of the overtime as being charged to the reserve fund. You know, we're talking debris's category A, category B has been all the overtime. So we've already had a good eight hundred and some thousand, almost eight hundred and some thousand, you know. Going against the general fund reserves, it could be used. Yes, it is there. The minimum fund balance is twenty percent, which is the minimum is about seven million dollars. Our unassigned fund balance is at nine million. So you do have a two million dollar gap between the nine million and the seven million dollar minimum. So you could use that.
But how much time do we have? If we use the, if we just use the reserve funds and didn't, didn't do all this shell games, moving it from other, other funds, the, and I apologize for using that term, but, you know, I I'm hesitant in wanting to, you know, we have the reserve funds for the purpose of the things that happened, right? We have it for the emergencies. And instead of using the reserves, we're going and grabbing hospital money or we're going and grabbing, you know, sidewalk money instead of using the reserve. I, I don't, I, I like, I don't like the optics of, of having the reserve look like it's healthy, but we have all these liabilities now. I would prefer we use the reserve funds. If we have to go do this, we do this. But, you know, it, it shows how vulnerable we are. You know, to have an eighty five million dollar general overall budget and having eight million dollars in reserves, which has slowly, we've kept that eight million for how long? How long has it been in the eight million dollar range?
Well, we've been at eight point six, eight point seven million for the last six, seven years.
Okay, six, seven years. And if you go back about eight years, we had a fifty five million dollar budget, right? So the reserve fund was well above what was required. And we've just kept that reserve fund at eight million, but the, the budget keeps growing and growing and we're getting very close to
To the minimum.
Being the minimum. And then now we, it's, and I, I also, like Commissioner Banther said, I appreciate all you do for us to help us find money to do this and that. But I don't know, I'm just, I, it just, it, it just doesn't sit on me well to leave the reserve, have the impression that we're healthy while we're going and borrowing money from funds that are totally unrelated to the storm and what we should be using them for. Now let me ask you this, the, the, of this money, we say fifty percent is going to come when?
The expedited portion, they say between, I'm guessing between one month to two or three months.
Okay. And how about the other fifty percent?
Oh, that's what we're trying to cover. If we have the five, the five million total, we get the expedited two point five million, but we still need to pay two point five million.
When, when do you think, when do you think historically, how, how long have they taken? Because you were telling me that we're still waiting for money from two storms, two years.
Irma took two years.
Two years. Okay. So when you say we're going to pay back, so we're paying, we're borrowing this money for, you think, a month or two?
No, no, you're, you're borrowing this money, not, this isn't the expedite, this is money above, over, over and above the expedite.
It's possible we don't pay the hospital fund back for two years?
It could be, it could be a year, two years.
And so again, the appearance of, of being well funded, but yet we've, because we left our reserve fund looking like we're healthy, but we're going and taking money from other funds that now we could be two years before we pay them back.
Yeah. And if you do.
And the hospital fund was never intended to be a piggy bank to be used for this purpose. The hospital fund is, and correct me if I'm wrong, they prepaid some rent that is supposed to go towards the end of the, of the term. And they discounted that number so that we could earn interest on that money between now and the time that we're actually going to be using those hospital funds, right? Because we're going to have several years, we have no, we'll have no rent, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we're taking this money out of the hospital fund that is not, and now we're not getting interest. It could be two years to getting it back. Have you, have you calculated how much we're losing in earnings that we should be putting back in the hospital fund?
You could add interest on to the interfund loan to have it paid back with interest if you wanted to.
But who, I mean, we're paying the interest. We're not getting this interest from an outside party.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not interest. We can pay interest, but that, that's coming out of our, out of our money.
Yeah.
Right now, there's money sitting in that account earning interest.
Yeah. The, the other concern is the debris removal is most likely to get, get higher. It's going to get higher than five million. It might be seven million, might be eight million. And then you got hurricanes next year. So trying to find the money, which pots of money to help do an interfund loan, or you could do a bank loan if you wanted to, to help cover the, until we get the FEMA reimbursements.
Anyway, I appreciate your, you're always looking for ways to fund things. But in this case, I'm not in favor of taking money from the hospital. This is not what it was intended for. We should use our reserve. That could be a last resort, going over there and borrowing money for a purpose that's unrelated. And so I'm, yeah, I'm, I think we should use our reserve funds. That's what they're there for. And if the reserve fund balances are low, then people need to know.
Yeah.
That we need to replenish that because right now they, they will not know that. They'll think, oh, when we get our financials, it's going to show eight million dollars in the, in, in the reserve if we don't use that money. But we have all these liabilities to these other funds that we've, you know, kind of moved the money around.
Just so you're aware of, if we use three million out of the reserves, we're going down from eight point six million to five point six million. You're under your minimum right there. And you have to, you have to bring back, back up within two fiscal years.
We're allowed to be under the minimum for how long?
Two fiscal years.
Two fiscal years. Okay. And we, but we are. It, it, it's, it's, we're taking this money from other funds to, to, to show that we are healthy in our reserve, but we're not, because we're, we're, we're borrowing our money.
I'm good with it. If you want to do that, we can go to the five point six million.
I'm one commissioners, I'm only one commissioner. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Before I go to Commissioner Eisner or Banther, we did have City Manager Rudd put his light on just moments ago. So I'd like for him to talk.
Looking for authorization in the event we need to borrow these funds?
In the event, yes.
Not necessarily going to need to dip into those.
I haven't received the invoices yet, but you know, the five million is probably coming due and, and the sanitation fund's going to go into a, you know, a cash deficit position.
Okay. Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. So these funds in the hospital and also these funds in the reserve, you have them invested, correct?
Correct.
And they're invested at different interest rates, correct?
Yeah, depending on the investment, yes.
Okay. So wouldn't it be wise to take the lowest interest rate returns and utilize those, whichever they are, rather than losing a higher interest rate?
You mean if there's lower interest rate on the hospital fund?
Yes.
But I've got them all spread out in pools. So they're all basically earning. So it's all equal, the same interest rate.
Okay. So you're trying to keep things where you're, you're not lowering the reserves too much by borrowing from, let's say, multiple sources?
Right.
Okay. Is that what you've always done?
Well, we don't borrow too much from other funds. This is an emergency situation. I know I was concerned about it. I got with Attorney Dickman to say, can we do this? And he said, this is an emergency situation. We could do the interfund loan.
Well, we've had hurricanes before. We've had debris removal is, and you've, this is not your first rodeo. So my question is, have you done these kind of procedures before?
We had more of a, the, the hurricane before was just a vegetative debris removal. We only, it was only between one, one million, one point two, I think no more than one point five million. So the sanitation fund could handle it all.
Right. So this was then the largest and because why you've had to, okay. Like I said, I mean, I, it doesn't really matter where you're taking it from. I wouldn't want it to go down below a reserve amount that we have to keep as a minimum.
Yeah.
But, you know, it, it's not like you're taking it and not going to reimburse it. So to me, I don't really have a difference of opinion. I don't care where you take it from, you know. I, I've, I know we borrowed from the sidewalk fund for fire trucks and then had, you know, so.
If FEMA, if we, if I knew that FEMA was going to reimburse us before September thirtieth of this year, before our audit's done, I, I wouldn't even be here and stuff.
I hear you. Okay. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Eisner. Commissioner Banther?
Yes, thank you. I definitely hear what the Vice Mayor's saying. And, you know, my only concern is, you know, obviously, as Commissioner Eisner pointed out, I think, I, I think others did too. Regardless of where it comes from, well, if we do an interfund loan, we have to pay it back. If we use and pay it back with, obviously, we're going, we're going to get FEMA money at least half upfront in some, in some soon fashion. Or if we take it from reserves, we got to do it the same way. The issue I see it, Ron, and correct me if I'm wrong, if we take it from reserves, we are forced by hand. I mean, we are forced by charter to replenish that fund to twenty percent in two years, correct?
Two fiscal years.
There's no ifs, ands, or buts about that.
That's what, yes, that's what's in the policy.
Whereas if we use, if we do an interfund loan, okay, and, you know, FEMA, they're going to take beyond two years. Let's, let's just be realistic here, right? You know, we're not, we're not forced to replenish those monies in the same way by charter, correct?
Correct.
And that, that's kind of the main, the main, the main difference here.
Right.
So if we use the reserve funds, which I fully see the Vice Mayor's point, it is important for residents and people that review the financials to know what's going on and where money is moving. I'm just concerned that would put us in a very tight position where, you know, if things don't work out the right way or if we have a second crisis next year, we're in a tough spot and could be forced to borrow money at an unfavorable rate to replenish that, or God forbid, raise the military. I don't think we really could raise the military rate that much to do that. That would not be politically or feasibly possible. So that's just, you know, I definitely want to make sure we, you know, we validate the Vice Mayor's concerns on this. I understand his approach. I just have hesitation because of it forcing our hand. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Banther. Vice Mayor Colianis?
Commissioner Banther, the, these, this option to be able to pull money from these other funds will be available two years from now as well. I, I want, you know, I'm, I'm big on fiscal responsibility. And if our, if our goal is to replenish those funds in two years, then that should be our goal. It should be in our budget to be able to do that. I just think that the first, I just don't think the first resort should be to go borrow money from funds that whose primary purpose aren't to handle these, these disasters. I think we use our money that are intended for that, which is a reserve. We always have this option. This option's available two years from now, eighteen months from now, or whenever we want to use this option. I just don't think it's the first option is to go raid the hospital fund to, again, give the appearance that we have funds that we don't have. I don't want, you know, you know, we've had boards here for the last several terms that, in my opinion, have been drunk on funds. Right now, I'm not, you know, we had, you know, eighteen million dollars come from ARPA money and, and all kinds of stuff. And, and this, you know, the, this next term and maybe the next couple of terms, we're not going to have all those luxuries. We have this issue that is going to really tighten us. And I just, again, don't feel that the first resort should be to go raid other funds that are unrelated. We should use what we have. We always, again, have this, this resort as a last resort. We can always default to it if in fact we're, are forced to. Hopefully FEMA comes through before two years, we get our money back and we're, you know, we're whole. But again, we'll know a lot more things in May. So again, I'd rather use, I personally would rather use the, the, the actual money that are intended for this, for these purposes. And then we in May are going to know a lot because that's when our appraisals are going to come from the county and we're going to know whether we're going to have a, a, a super tight budget for next year or whether we're not. I hope we're not. I hope everything comes through and we have, you know, an increase. But, you know, until we know that, we need to be, you know, fiscally super conservative. It's just the way we have to be. So anyways, that's my opinion on it.
Okay, Mister Herring, I, I'm going to support it as it is tonight. The, I understand the Vice Mayor's concerns with the reserves, the way, the way I've been thinking about it and the way I've, I think I've been trained in a way with, when I talk with staff and, you know, it was, reserves come absolutely last, the very last situation possible to try to, you know, cover some of these expenses. And I'm sure with this state of emergency that we're in and, and the borrowing of the loans that we can, the process that we're going to go, go forward. I know you do your best to sit, you know, you're crunching numbers left and right. We sit here as policy people, you know, say yes or no to how things are going, but Ron Herring and his staff are constantly looking at everything, trying to balance the budget as, you know, just things that we can't control have come in front of us as a community and as a region. And I, I just thank you a lot for everything you do and, and trying to make it all work for the budget. I appreciate Vice Mayor's concerns moving forward. That may be a policy direction to, to be given in, in case of a state of emergency. And I know we're supposed to use those funds in that situation. But I'm thankful that it wasn't as, could have been a lot worse, even though it, it was bad for our community. And so with that said, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve Resolution two zero two four dash five one. Go move. Second. There are no further comments. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Di Donato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
No.
Mayor Colias?
Yes. Item twenty seven, application for annexation, land use and zoning for property located at two four nine two five one Encloat Road, application two four dash five one. This is a quasi judicial hearing. City Attorney, can you please read the titles?
Yes, Mayor, just before we're gonna, we're gonna get started here. This is a, these are companion items, three companion items. So it'll be one presentation, but there will have to be three votes on it. So I'm going to read all three titles. Bear with me. Ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero eight, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, annexing point three six acres more or less of real property located at two four nine and two five one Encloat Road. Application twenty four dash fifty one, amending the future land use map for property located at two four nine and two five one Encloat Road from Pinellas County. Employment category E to the City of Tarpon Springs, industrial general I G category, amending the official zoning atlas for property located at twenty eight, twenty, two four nine and two five one Encloat Road from the City of Tarpon's, from, from Pinellas County, C two, which is general commercial and service district to development district, providing for findings and providing for an effective date. Ordinance twenty four dash ten is an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the future land use map for point three seven acres more or less of real property located at two four nine and two five one Encloat Road, application twenty four fifty one from Pinellas County. Employment category E to the City of Tarpon Springs, industrial general category I G, providing for findings and providing for an effective date. And finally, twenty four dash zero nine, an, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the official zoning atlas for point three seven acres more or less of real property located at located at two, four, nine and two, five, one, Anclot Road from Pinellas County. C two, general commercial and service district to city of Tarpon Springs, WD two, waterfront marine industrial development district, providing for findings and providing for effective date. Thank you.
City Attorney, can you explain that this is a quasi judicial process?
Yes, so, um, one of the, so what's quasi judicial among this is really the zoning part. Um, but since it's a companion item and it's gonna be one presentation, whenever you amend your comprehensive plan, you may recall, it, that's, uh, that's actually a legislative item. Um, but since you're annexing property from the county to the city, logically, it has to marry up with your, uh, comprehensive plan and your zoning atlas. So that's what all these are doing. So my advice would be just to conduct the whole thing as a quasi judicial hearing, which has a heightened level of due process. Uh, and what that requires is, uh, anyone who's gonna testify, testify under oath. Uh, the commissioners up here would have to disclose any ex-party communications and, um, go from there.
Okay, so now we will swear everyone in that will be speaking on, uh, the agenda twenty-seven A through C. City Attorney, can you swear everyone in?
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? All right.
Okay. And, and are there any ex-party communications from board members that they would wish to disclose now? Uh, Commissioner Eisner?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I spoke with the applicant, uh, but not per se with the annexing, but, um, as that was part, I think, uh, tha- that also got flooded. And so there was quite a few people in town that I've spoken to that have been flooded. So that's what it pertained to.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, any other ex-party communications? Okay, thank you. Uh, now to present, we have city staff presentation. Um, we're planning director Renee Vincent.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor Commissioners. Uh, this is application twenty-four, dash, fifty-one, annexing approximately a third of an acre, um, on the north side of the Anclot River, um, into the city of Tarpon Springs. And then, uh, as, uh, the city attorney indicated, applying the proper, uh, future land use map and zoning categories, uh, associated with that annexation. Um, the property's located at two, forty-nine, two, fifty-one, Anclot Road. Uh, here's an aerial view showing the site. Um, so this is Anclot Road, uh, North Pinellas Avenue. Um, this property is actually, there's another aerial view. You can see there's a house, you know, old house on the site, um, an outbuilding. And then, uh, boats are being stored on it in association with the Bell Harbor Marina. And again, just another aerial photograph. Uh, this property is, um, it's actually qualifies as a type A enclave, so it's kind of completely surrounded, um, by incorporated, uh, by the city. Um, the, the surrounding land use you can see in the light gray is, um, that's the city land use designation of industrial general, um, which is what the, the land use is proposed to be upon annexation. Uh, the site zoning in the area, um, again, in the city, the WD two, uh, which is a waterfront industrial designation, is what the surrounding area mostly is. And that, again, that's what, uh, the applicant is seeking upon annexation for zoning designation. Uh, just a aerial, uh, survey over top of the aerial. Um, under our, we have, uh, several criteria to look at for annexation. I'm not gonna go into these in, in depth. Um, there's no code enforcement cases. Uh, you're not creating, um, you're reducing actually a type A enclave. Um, there's no, uh, really no, uh, in our research, nothing that would be, you know, flagged as, you know, being objectionable to annexation. Uh, the roadway access does come via private easement from Anclot Road. The, uh, future land use amendment, uh, being proposed is, um, again, goes to the, um, industrial general future land use map designation. Um, on the new twenty forty-five comprehensive plan that, which actually just went into effect, that is now just industrial. Um, and this is, uh, that's consistent with the, um, place-based area map for the working waterfront intensive. So everything is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Uh, this is the place-based area map. This is new in the comprehensive plan that identifies this entire area for working waterfront, and that's what's being proposed. The review criteria for zoning, um, everything, um, is supports rezoning this to WD two. That's consistent with the proposed land use. Um, the staff recommendation, um, you know, we didn't make a formal recommendation, um, just in, kind of in keeping with past policy. Uh, but the, the, uh, the staffing on it does support, um, approving it. The Planning and Zoning Board did recommend approval unanimously of ordinance twenty, twenty-four, dash, oh, eight, uh, which is the annexation ordinance, um, twenty-four, dash, ten, the future land use map amendment, and twenty, twenty-four, dash, oh, nine, the zoning atlas amendment. So with that, I'll stop and answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board for, uh, staff presentation? Does the applicant have any questions across-examining city staff?
I'm Merlin Seaman from one, one, six, one Marina Drive. Uh, and I'll keep it real short here. Uh, basically, I just came into staff, uh, a couple of months ago and said I'd, I'd like to get this all consistent with the rest of the Marina. So all we're really trying to do is just make the land use and zoning consistent and get the property into the city and, and out of the county.
Thank you, Mr. Seaman. There are no further comments. Uh, Ms. Vincent, are you willing to, um, accept the presentation to the record?
Yes, and the, uh, associated staff materials.
Thank you. Now we're going to the applicant's presentation. Would you like to present anything, Mr. Seaman? Absolutely. Oh, that's fine. We're going, uh, any questions from the board for the applicant? Okay, we're now going to public comments on, uh, this application. Are there any public comments? IT, are there any Zoom comments?
If anyone online would like to make a public comment on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Hearing none, the DOC will go into deliberations and we will start with first, uh, ordinance A or ordinance twenty-seven A. Uh, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve, uh, ordinance twenty-seven A, two, zero, two, four, dash, zero, eight, annexation.
Go move. Second.
Okay. There are no further comments or discussion. Roll call please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Kuyas?
Yes. Next, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve item twenty-seven B, ordinance two, zero, two, four, dash, ten, future land use map amendment.
Go move.
Go move.
Second.
There are no further comments? Roll call please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Kuyas?
Yes. Uh, the Chair will now entertain a motion to approve item twenty-seven C, ordinance two, zero, two, four, dash, zero, nine, rezoning?
Go move.
Second.
There are no further comments? Roll call please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Kuyas?
Yes. Item twenty-eight, resolution two, zero, two, four, dash, five, two, ratification of executive orders two, zero, two, four, dash, fourteen and two, zero, two, four, dash, sixteen, extending a declaration of state of emergency for Tarpon Springs due to Hurricane Helene. Uh, City Attorney, can you please read the title?
Yes, Mayor, the next two resolutions that are, that are on are, uh, ratifying the executive orders. I'll read the first one. It's twenty-four, fifty-two, dash, fifty-two. Resolution, Board of Commissioners of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, ratifying executive order twenty-four, dash, fourteen, extending the declaration of local state of emergency to November nineteen, twenty twenty-four, and ratifying executive order twenty-four, dash, sixteen, extending the declaration of local state of emergency to November twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, and providing for an effective date hereof.
Thank you, City Attorney. Are there any public comments on this item? IT, are there any Zoom comments?
If anyone online would like to make a public comment on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you. Uh, hearing none, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve item twenty-eight, resolution two, zero, two, four, dash, five, two.
Go move.
Second. There are no further comments? Roll call please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Kuyas?
Yes. Item twenty-nine, resolution two, zero, two, four, dash, five, three, ratification of executive orders two, zero, two, four, dash, fifteen and two, zero, two, four, dash, seventeen, extending a declaration of state of emergency for Tarpon Springs due to Hurricane Milton. City Attorney, can you please read the title?
Yes, sir. Resolution twenty-four, dash, fifty-three, resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, ratifying executive order twenty-four, dash, fifteen, extending the declaration of local state of emergency to November nineteen, twenty, twenty twenty-four, and ratifying executive order twenty-four, dash, seventeen, extending the declaration of local state of emergency to November twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, and providing for an effective date hereof.
Thank you, sir. Are there any public comments on this item? IT, are there any Zoom comments?
Anyone online would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you. Uh, hearing none, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve Agenda item twenty-nine, resolution two, zero, two, four, dash, five, three.
Go move.
Second. There are no further comments? Roll call please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner? Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Kuyas?
Yes. Uh, we have item thirty, which is ordinance two, zero, two, four, dash, zero, seven, charter language. This is the first reading. Uh, City Clerk, please, uh, read the title.
Actually, the Attorney will read the title and then I will.
And then, uh, we'll, I'll, I'll definitely need some help from the clerk on this one after I read the title. Uh, ordinance twenty-four, twenty-four, dash, zero, seven, an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, submitting the following proposed amendments to the city charter by the Charter Revision Commission to the electors of city for approval. An amendment to section three, limitations of power. An amendment to section eight, Board of Commissioners compensate, composition and powers. An amendment to section eleven, terms of office qualifications, date of annual election. An amendment to section thirteen, interference with administration. An amendment to section fourteen, internal auditor. An amendment to section sixteen, city manager. An amendment, amendment to section twenty, residency. An amendment to section twenty-three, general. An amendment to section twenty-six, sidewalk improvement fund. An amendment to section thirty, init- initiative and referendum. An amendment to section thirty-two, amendments. Uh, an amendment to section thirty-three, city hospital, providing that the charter shall be amended to incorporate any proposed amendment, receiving a majority vote of the electors of the city in favor of such an amendment and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Uh, are there any public comments on this item? IT, are there any Zoom comments?
Anyone online would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Before we go to Commissioner DiDonato, we're gonna have, uh, City Clerk, um, talk over the item.
Yes, so what you have before you this evening is the, uh, the ordinance, uh, that the charter, uh, has, uh, done in final form. According to the, the charter, you have to adopt this verbatim. There'll be, uh, another item on the agenda where we can discuss those changes and the board's opportunity. But at this time, this is the first reading in final form and it'll come back for a second reading at the December third meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner DiDonato, you had a comments?
Well, uh, what I stated last time when we went through this, I guess it, it actually got to the committee because I, while I wasn't mentioned by name, I was mentioned as one who felt that it was too long. And I still feel that way. I, I'm trying to picture it. I, I don't disagree with what the, the Charter Review Committee was attempting to do. I wanna make that real clear. There's no disagreement. It's, it's just, I'm, I'm worried about the understanding of, of what we're asking our citizens to vote on. And I'm, I'm trying to picture, I counted fifteen pages. In our backup that have changes. How is that gonna look on the ballot?
Um.
I mean, it's hard to picture.
It'll probably be a two-card ballot. Um, I believe, I, I think because we split one of the questions, there's a total of twenty cr- questions that are proposed by the charter.
Hmm, we don't know exactly how many pages that's gonna be.
It'll, it'll be a two-card ballot.
Okay, all right, and it's seventy-five words or less still?
The, the title is fifteen words limit and
The description.
The, the question, the description is seventy-five and that'll come back before you, uh, by resolution at the December seventeenth meeting.
It'll be interesting to see that, uh, with fifteen pages of changes, uh, and twenty different items. I just ask our voters to, if you have any questions, uh, please ask. If I can help, if any of us can help, please feel free to do that. But I, again, it's, it's, it's long. I still feel strongly that a lot of this is policies and procedures, some of the stuff we're already doing. Yeah, I just, it's asking a lot and I hope that we're all prepared to help.
Also, just for your information, a flyer does go out, uh, to the public, but it can only state the facts of what it is currently and, you know, what the change is and why the change was made.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Banther?
Yes, thank you. I, I, I wanna first thank all the members of, of, of the Charter Committee. I served on that when I left office back, back in, back in twenty nineteen and it's, and it, and it's a thankless job. I mean, you're meeting once a week in the dead of summer or you're meeting through summer. It's not the most fun thing in the world, but it's very needed and I appreciate their work. Um, I do echo Commissioner, Commissioner, um, Adi Donato's concerns about the size of it. Not much we can do about that, obviously. The, the, the committee's kind of independent of us because we appoint them. Um, but I would ask the public, and this goes for anything, whether it's a land purchase, charter, anything we put on the ballot or we authorize to go to the ballot. We don't actually put it on the ballot. Don't assume that that means the commission wants an affirmative yes. And I, I think it's very important that, that the public understands that. I do like that we put things on the ballot because not everything should be by fiat up here. There's the voters have a right to decide things in the city, but please do your research. Don't just go off of what somebody tells you. Do your research on each item and vote for yourself yes or no. Okay, I, I just, I think there's sometimes this, this theory that when we put stuff to the ballot, then it's, it has commission endorsement. I know back in my first tenure, I, we, I put stuff on the ballot I voted no against, but I believed it was rightfully so to go to the, to, I, I, to, to go to the ballot. So I just ask that people, uh, keep that in mind when they, when, when, when they vote. Um, you know, I, I have a little bit of concerns with some of the items, but again, uh, I, you know, I, I'm not sure the relevancy of that being that this committee's kind of independent and it's gonna go to the voters, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Banther. Uh, Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Irene, do you want us to go, uh, line by line on these, what we agreed to and disagreed to right now?
Um, that would be at the next, on the next item because this, you cannot make any changes to. It has to be adopted as they presented.
All right, so this, this is just on what the Charter Committee has brought before us?
That's correct, and that's the ordinance that.
So I will then hold off until we get to that.
Thank you, Commissioner Eisner. Vice Mayor?
I wanna, uh, thank the, uh, committee, obviously. They wouldn't have had this many items if they hadn't done a lot of work. So it, it's kind of in, indic- indicative of, of a lot of work. Um, I have the same concerns as Commissioner DiDonato. It's, you know, these ballots get exhaustive, uh, for citizens. Um, you know, that my, uh, I'm, and I'm also hesitant to have alternate, um, proposals from the commission. I think that even becomes even more confusing for the residents. Um, I mean, the only thing I'm, I'm. I mean, the only thing I'm a little disappointed in is the this residency thing. I, yeah, I don't, I, it's hard enough to find good people in this in this environment to, you know, be putting any kind of restrictive language on him. You know, ten miles, so some, a really good candidate lives ten point one miles. Oh, you can't take them, but you could take the guy who lives nine point nine miles. You know, that really should be this man here's decision. He should be able to hire who he who he feels is competent. He should be able to sit down. If he if he sees somebody lives in Lakeland, he thinks that's a little too far for them to be convenient to Tarpon. He says, no, that's that's not gonna work. Some guy lives in Wesley Chapel, maybe ten point one miles away, and he goes, yeah, that that works. So I, again, anytime we take away, like like Commissioner DiDonato said, a lot of these are our own rules and procedures and things that we should have, especially this gentleman here who's gonna have to run our city, should have the 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 option of picking who he thinks is is good candidates to fill spots. But besides that, you know, again, I don't want alternate alternate language. I don't want to be, you know, battling publicly with our committee. You know, overall, I think they did a good job. So. Anyways, that's my only reservation. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner DiDonato?
Yeah, I just need to clarify. I had the privilege of being on that committee three different times. I was chairman twice. So I totally believe in in the committee. I know how much work they went through. I observed most all of the meetings online. I condone the committee. I want to make sure that they understand. It's just, I I I know from experience, I'm asked frequently, you know, how should I vote on this referendum item? And I know sometimes in seventy-five words or less to describe it, it's it's a little difficult. Mr. Attorney, you can probably tell me that that's it's difficult to put some of these in seventy-five words or less. I would agree with Commissioner Colianis. I, the the mileage thing, I I think that really handicaps the city's ability to be able to hire. I understand why they did what they did. I watched that session. I just want to make it clear to the colleagues that served on that on the Charter Review that I truly appreciate their efforts. I'm just, I have concern over some of the things because it's really, well, it's policy procedures that we do and should have a right to control. And now it's gonna be in the charter, which means you don't have that right anymore. So. And understanding twenty-some different items, you're gonna, maybe some of you want help or want to talk about it. So I for one am offering, and I'm sure my fellow commissioners would would do that as well.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes, I want to really, Commissioner DiDonato just made a very good point about something. And it's, you know, policy and procedure. Oh, sorry. And it's and it's policy and procedure versus in the charter. We we can't, we can't change the charter. It goes in there. It's in there until the next review committee, and we don't have a lot of influence on that. Policy and procedures, we can change. So that is, that that might be something for 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 discussion, that there's things that are good now, but might not be good in two years. And that's that's a really, really big difference when it comes to the city. So I think we should be mindful of that. I think voters should be mindful of that when they're reviewing these items. Are are these things that in and of themselves should be corrected for the long term of Tarpon Springs, or at least the next, what's it, what's it, five years? Four or five years? Or is this something that's that 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 could be a market condition and change over the course of one or two years? So I just, I just want to make sure that point was echoed because that's that was a very important point. Thank you.
Thank you to the board. The way I've been taught and regarding our charter, it's it's basically the constitution or, you know, the Bible of our city, and it's a very delicate document document. So I appreciate all the hard work the Charter Revision Commission did to put these questions together. But I do have my concerns as majority of this board when we talked about some of the questions being policy-driven as opposed to items that should be memorialized into the charter. So. And as Commissioner DiDonato and the rest of the board said, keeping the citizens engaged and being able to read all the information and not not just going through and hitting yes on everything. And I'm sure maybe the Charter Revision Committee would like that. But I just thought it's a very delicate document, and there was a lot of items that were brought to it. And so we just want to keep the residents engaged and have them answer all the questions. And so City Attorney, I'd like to ask you, the Charter Revision Commission is a, we didn't, are we allowed privately, individually to say, hey, I oppose this charter item? Or, you know, or even if I go on social media, am I allowed to say something like that? Because it's something that the Charter Revision is presenting and not we as a board member putting on the referendum. But it's delicate, so I don't know if you could explain it a little bit?
Yeah, I can explain it a little bit. I mean, you you all have a provision that triggers a charter, a charter review. A lot of cities don't. You go through that process, and right now, the process is to bring it to you all to ultimately decide, you know, how, you know, going on to the ballot. So individually, so there's there's you all as one, as a board, acting together on behalf of the city, and then individually, you all are elected officials, and you can, and residents, you're right, you're voting. So you have, you don't give up your your First Amendment right to, just because you're elected, the First Amendment right to express your own opinions privately. Not not here, of course. I mean, here's where you conduct the people's business, and that's what you're doing right now. But you shouldn't, you should not use public funds to, you know, say to voice your your position on it. So I would, I would, I would not, I would advise you not to put together flyers with your name and your title and city stuff and saying what you believe or not believe. But if you're at, you're with some friends or you're at a meeting and you just say, hey, this is, here's my opinion on this. This is the way I'm voting. You're allowed to do that. Does that, does that help you?
Yeah, I think it does. Yeah. Or maybe if I go on social media and say, as a private resident, I don't support this or do support this.
Right. Just be careful about whether that is, you know, we've talked about social media. I don't want to get too deep into it. Some, you know, some of it is your 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 public official page versus your personal page. So make sure you're being very clear that you're you're speaking as a citizen, you know, in that capacity and not projecting the the views of the city.
Yes, no. Thank you, City Attorney, for clarifying that. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, Mayor, that was a great question. So if we, just reiterating, so we can't change any of this. This is, the charter has the authority to put these things on the ballot. We can't put something saying, oh, but the board doesn't like this item. So we. So that's a question. Can, if the board, let's say we did, let's say we voted that we don't like the mileage issue.
So in the next, in the next conversation we have, it would be the board's decision where they decide whether they want to put their own opposing question.
What if there's no question? What if it's, we just want to leave?
You would have to do a question. I've never heard.
Saying not to change the?
It would be some type of question that would be proposed, and each question's gonna say either it's proposed by the Charter Revision Commission, or it's proposed by the VOC.
So and getting back to to the mayor's question, on social media, on our own private social media page, we, you're saying we could say, as a resident, here's how I plan to vote on these items?
There's nothing wrong with that. No, you're citizens. As long as you make it clear that you're distinguishing, this is not, we're not speaking, I'm not speaking on behalf of the city. I'm not speaking on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. This is my opinion. And, you know, each, all of you have your your constituents who voted for you, obviously, so you have the ability to communicate with them. But, you know, just be be mindful of the fact that, you know, you can't, you can state your opinion and how you're gonna vote and, but don't form, you know.
But it's important to qualify it saying it.
Yeah.
I'm doing this as a private resident.
This is my opinion.
This is as a as a voter, here's how I planned to vote. I'm not talking as a commissioner or a mayor or or else.
Right. And, you know, you've already, you all have expressed opinions up here individually. You haven't taken any votes on it. You've 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 expressed your views, which, you know, people see that and they watch that. I mean, that's perfectly fine. You're up here individually and collectively. But just be very careful of how you present it outside of this arena and and the media, the the median that you use. And like I said, I use examples of flyers and things like that, campaigning against something. Just just be very cautious about it. And, you know, you, I know Attorney Salzman was the attorney at the the committee. You can, if you have questions, you could talk to me or him about this before you act. So.
Thank you, City Attorney. Commissioner Banther?
Yeah, fine. That that's the attorney's correct, obviously, but I would, we don't lose our First Amendment rights on this board, but we kind of do. I mean, I've told my family, too, that they lose their rights as well when I'm in office. And it's not like I said, we at first, you can put on your Facebook or whatever, Twitter, Instagram, whatever you want to. Y'all know I've made my opinions known in the past, but as I've grown in my previous position in this, you know, I I just, I'm more for verbally saying my opinion. Someone asks me, hey, David, should we buy that? Should we approve that amendment? Yes, no, maybe so. Obviously, that's fine. There is very little good anymore that comes to social media post. I mean, I don't know. It's a really cost benefit analysis because there's people in this town and every town in America, that's they're just waiting. So I would, I would caution the board to to put yes, put support or 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 not support certain things on social media, only because what good's gonna come? You know, I think it's a lot more influential to verbally, and people, because people are gonna ask all of us, right? We're the, we're the, we're the, we're the, we're the five up here, right? To just verbally say our thoughts and opinions. I just, you know, I don't see much good coming out if we put on there what we do and don't like. And first off, mine would be so long, no, 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 no one's gonna read that. You know what I mean? Like, that's just not, and so as I understand it, Irene, for this next item, because we have to go back to that one item, correct, for the charter questions, our only, we can't say yes or no. All we can do is 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 do an opposing question, right?
That is correct.
That's it. So I mean, I'll stay here as late as you guys want, but in but in my book, there, I mean, there's things, I'll be honest, there's things I disagree with in this. I'm not gonna vote for all of it. Most of it's good. There's things I don't agree with. That's just my opinion. But nothing I see is, to me, is 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 so dire, we should put an opposing question. My thoughts can be changed with y'all's opinions, but that's just my sense on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Banther. There are no further comments. The chair will entertain a motion to approve ordinance two zero two four dash zero seven, charter language, first reading.
Still moved.
There are no further comments. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Culias?
Yes. We are now going to item thirty-one, resolution two zero two four dash five four, ratifying election results from November fifth, two thousand twenty-four. And City Attorney, can you please read the title?
Yes, sir. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, ratifying and confirming the results of the special referendum election held on November five, two thousand twenty-four, and providing for an effective date hereof.
Thank you. There any public comments on this item? I T, are there any Zoom comments?
If anyone online would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you. Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion to approve resolution two zero two four dash five four, ratifying election results from November fifth, two thousand twenty-four.
Still moved.
Second. There are no further comments. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Mayor Culias?
Yes. Item thirty-two, ordinance two zero two four dash zero one has been deferred to the date certain of December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. We are now going back to item twenty-four, discussion of possible B O C charter questions. And we have City Clerk to go over this item?
The Honorable Mayor and Board of Commissioners, just for the public's knowledge, section thirty-two of our charter states that the Board of Commissioners shall appoint a Charter Revision Commission at least every five years to review the provisions and to recommend any changes to the charter. The Charter Revision Commission presented the proposed charter amendments, and the Board of Commissioners made further comments. The Board of Commissioners then returned the proposed amendments to the Charter Revision Commission with their suggestions. And after review, the Charter Commission made their final report to the Board of Commissioners tonight, as we know, in final ordinance form, which has to be adopted verbatim. The Board of Commissioners in the same election may sponsor its own proposals. And the, like I said earlier, the referendum questions will advise whether it's initiated by the Charter Revision Commission or if it's initiated by the Board of Commissioners. In the event there's any conflict among proposals, the proposal receiving the greatest number of affirmative votes shall prevail to the extent of such conflict. I did want to let y'all know that the CRC Charter Revision Commission wanted me to pass along to the Board of Commissioners that they did hear your suggestions, and they did take them into consideration, even though the outcome might not be what you wanted. But they did have in-depth discussions on these suggestions at their last meeting. And it's, however the board would like me to do it, I can review every question, or I could just review the items that were changed that they did take your suggestions on.
To me, I really would like just to discuss what we would like to, if we, if there's a B O C question, we would like to add to the the charter, maybe oppose one of the questions. I mean, possibly go over each and every one of them when we can't really do anything about changing them.
There are a couple changes that they did make that I should advise you on, that they do take your suggestion before you do that.
Yes.
So I'll just go over those items. In section eight of the charter, which is the Board of Commissioners' composition duties and responsibilities and powers, we had, the current charter had various sections, and then they were adding sections regarding different plans, such as the comprehensive plan, the strategic plan, and things like that. And they added the sustainability plan. They had they had paragraphs I, J, and K and L. So the Board, the Board of Commissioners felt that some of those should be policy, and some they were okay with. However, the Charter Revision did go back, and they removed I, J, and L in its entirety, and combined them with the current section K, which just lists the plans, not the rest of the paragraphs, which reads, it's and it's gonna be, would be renumbered as I. And it would read, to review, update, retire, abandon, or deem completed all city master actions, sustainability, comprehensive, strategic plans every five years beginning October first, two thousand twenty-four. They just wanted to basically make sure that those plans get looked at at least every five years. So they did remove the rest on that one. The next change, the, was there was a section in the zoning powers, section twelve of the charter, that talked about for special exceptions, and they were gonna remove that. The B O C felt that it wasn't really needed. So what the charter did, they agreed with your suggestion, and they left as it is currently written in the charter, and there will be no question for that section. As far as section sixteen, which is city manager, acting city manager, and assistant city manager, they added, originally, they added for assistant city manager position. However, the B O C did not want the city manager position, especially with everything that has occurred, and wanted that to be left up to the current city manager. So the CRC agreed, and they removed So the CRC agreed and they removed that as a question. So they removed the Assistant City Manager as a requirement. However, they just left it in the title of that section. So in case it ever happened, it would be covered in that section. And the next change would be under the residency. So they did it in two parts. The first part, they requested that the City Manager, Assistant City Manager, Fire Chief, and Police Chief were required to reside within the city limits as defined in the planning area. The BOC was okay with that change. However, they wanted them to remove the Assistant City Manager. Again, the CRC denied that suggestion because they wanted to leave it if that position ever happened, that that would be a requirement of that position. So that was the one question of the residency. The second one on the residency, they're requiring that all department heads and directors who are not listed above in that paragraph I just read, would be required to live within ten miles of Tarpon Springs City Hall. Established city employees who are promoted to department heads or directors do not have to meet this residency requirement unless they are to change the residency during their employment as a department head or director. If the department head or directors change their residency, they must reside within ten miles of Tarpon Springs City Hall. The BOC wanted that totally removed. The CRC denied that suggestion, and they wanted it to leave it at as proposed. However, they did add a sentence that is currently in the charter now that would give the authority to the Board. And it reads, "The Board of Commissioners may temporarily excuse the residency requirement for such time periods. No one time period exceed one year as it deems appropriate in the best interest." And that was, that was the changes that were made. If the, you know, this is the only public forum, and with the storms and everything, we've been a little pushed back, so we are on a time crunch. If the Board of Commissioners wish to have any questions of their own, we would have to vote on what it is that you want the attorney to bring back. And an ordinance would have to be written, which would go for a first reading on December third. And then we would have to have a special session on December tenth to have a second reading on that. So I could bring back to you the questions, calling for the questions and calling for the election, along with the election contract on the seventeenth to meet my election deadlines for the March election. So that is what you have before you tonight to decide first if you wanna have any opposing questions and if you do what those are. So the City Attorney and myself could start drafting an ordinance, publish it, and make sure it meets the deadlines for you to have that question on the ballot.
Thank you, City Clerk, for going over the changes the CRC was considered. And now we'll go to Commissioner Eisner with comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I, what I did is I made copies of all the charter recommendations. So everything I don't speak about is a checkmark. But section eight, and first, let me start off. I did watch every single one of the Charter Commission meetings. And I also wanna thank, I I know they work very, very hard. But, you know, there's still, I I noticed a number of different opinions that were just on the committee. So I would expect to have different opinions up here as well. But one of the words that was used constantly was, we don't wanna make changes and make it into word salad. And yet, we have all of this sitting in front of us. And it comes back to being defined as word salad in some of what I'm reading. So Charter eight, section eight, I still want it removed and because I want it as policy. So that was one thing, but it's not a hill I wanna die on. Then we move over to section eleven. And on this one, I have my responses as no and no. I I still do not wanna have this at all. You know, I, it says here, BOC wanted CRC to remove this and keep it as currently written in the code. They did not want that. They split it into two questions. I still think it should be a no. And I'm happy to discuss this at a later date of why. Internal Auditor, section fourteen. Our request was BOC wanted this change removed because it was already added as a policy. I believe anything that's added as a policy, we don't need to have redundancy and and make it into a, which Commissioner Banther said, lock it in stone, and it could change in two years, three years, whatever. Number sixteen, same thing. BOC wanted this change removed because it was already a policy. They denied it. I I disagree. Again, it's not a hill I want you to die on, but, you know, what could I say? Residency was a big one with me. When I got up to speak, I spoke about residency. You know, I I don't wanna pick on age, but, you know, people that are my age, you know, we don't reach to our, we we take still business cards. We don't reach to our phone and make a copy of somebody's business card like the current younger people do. And I believe that having people living within the city limits doesn't make you love the city anymore. Doesn't make you love the city any less. The EOC is overcrowded, as is right now. They don't need more people to make ham sandwiches. It's, it's been covered very well all along. I just don't think that we should have more and more people there. Too many, too many cooks spoil the broth. If somebody's needed for a question, if the Fire Chief needs to ask a question, he's got, everybody's in their phone. He could text message, email, he could call and get a response just immediately. You know, none, none of the storms that come here just like blink out of nowhere. You know, we know they're coming. And, you know, that's not the time that you'd go and take, you know, visit to France. So, you know, and any one of his people that are under him know that they need to be, at least have an ear by the phone so that he could ask or pick up, you know, pick their brain and say, what are we gonna do with this? What are you gonna do with this? Same thing with the fire, with the police chief. So I, I'm, I, I, I don't think we should have any sort of limitation except for what is reasonable to have within the area. We shouldn't have people in Lakeland or or somewhere where they're so far out of touch that they're not even in our county. So that goes for City Manager and all department heads. I wouldn't even get into that at all. I I I think that should be removed. Then, let's see, twenty three, I had no issue with. Go to twenty six, Section Sidewalk. BOC removed because this is already a policy. Same thing again. It's policy. Why are we playing, you know, again, they use words constantly, and I've heard it. I don't mention names, but I heard it, word salad. We can't have word salad. And then they put these things in that adds to word salad. So I heard what Commissioner Donato said. The, our residents are gonna get overwhelmed by this, you know. I I just think we really need to go after, you know, I think if, if I remember the total, when we went through this the first time, we had about eight items, and they have about twenty. And I I just think that's excessive. You know, I I know what all twenty are, and everybody up here knows what all twenty are, but I don't think the residents know what all twenty is or are, and it's, it's confusing. I don't wanna have confusion. Let's see. Everything else, I was in agreement, and I do wanna thank them. They worked very hard. It was very lengthy. I I definitely even enjoyed, they they held off discussing the contract that we had with the hospital until they got the exact name of what was on the contract. So all in all, they did a great job. You know, I I thought it was a a great blend of different people with different ideas. They all brought in their thoughts, and that's just where I'm at. I don't know what everybody else has gone through that they like or don't like. I just don't think it's a great idea to put twenty items on there. So even though we can't stop it, it's already on there, I know. But, you know, we should at least be able to give a a couple of different choices, that's all. Not a lot. I don't wanna make it where it's twenty, and now we're giving them twenty six or twenty eight of them to think of, so. That's it. Thank you, Commissioner Eisner. Commissioner Banther?
Yes, thank you. Two things I wanted to point out. The old system, the mics were always on, so I'm just getting used to that. I apologize. Two things I wanna point out, the internal auditor, and this was obviously, well, in the last charter review, the the one I was on, I disagreed with this. We had a, we had a firm do it, and the, and the, 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 the committee, and thus the voters, wanted to have a permanent position. And and thus so is it. So it says about the City Attorney to review before being provided to as far as their, their, as as far as their findings. I I understand their approach to that because I believe the current internal auditor did, had, had some things that were, that that, that, that were concerning. But it's still supposed to be only reporting to to the, to the commission, correct? Like, they don't work under you, correct, Charles or anybody else? I mean, that's fine if if that's, if that's legal and appropriate, but that doesn't make a lot, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me for that position to be like autonomous, but then still have to run things by the City Attorney, the City Manager first, but whatever. And I do echo my, 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 my colleagues' thoughts on the residency concerns. I don't so much mind it for the City Manager, Assistant City Manager, Fire Chief, and and like Police Chief, that, okay, I get that. But all department heads and 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 directors, I just, I worry that's gonna hamstring us. You know, in the sense of, especially how the world is today. It's not do or die for me. I'm not gonna go by a billboard and say, liking to vote against this. But I do wanna make that that known sense, 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 my, 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 my colleagues did it, did as well. That that's a, that's definitely a, a, a concern to me, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Banther. Vice Mayor Colianis?
Commissioner Banther, that, that internal auditor revision or that, that adding that the City Attorney review before being provided, the reason, I actually recommended that when I was at the, that the Board at Commission meeting. Because what happens is, if the internal auditor does a report and it's put, given to the Board of Commissioners, then it becomes public record.
I gotcha.
Okay, so if, if in fact, the internal auditor puts something in there that has legally, you know, is inappropriate, it could be inflammatory, the City Attorney has a chance to opine with him, express his concerns, maybe help him change some words so that we don't get ourselves in a pickle. And rather than, and because if it came to us, then it's public record. And if, and again, if it's something sensitive, and, you know, you're obviously referring to something that, you know, happened and shouldn't have. So that's why that's in there. So I I think that's actually a good.
Appreciate that clarity.
I think it's a good positive thing to help us protect ourselves from any unnecessary litigation that could come from, from something being inappropriately put in that report. You know, again, my concern is the residency thing. This thing about living in the city and whether you love the city, don't love the city. People do their job because they're professionals. So, you know, Ron Herring, we can pick on Ron, but Ron is a consummate professional that cares about his job. If he was working for Largo, he would be just as professional as he is working for Tarpon Springs. He hasn't lived in this city the entire time. I know he started back when my brother was mayor thirty seven years ago. And has never lived in the city and has worked tirelessly for the city. I hope he loves the city, but I don't, I don't care. He's a professional, and that's what he does. And no different than this gentleman right here. If he didn't get hired by us and he got hired by somebody else, he would do his job just like he's gonna do it for us because he's a professional. So anytime we put these residency things to try to have some message of of concern for the town or whatever, I I I think they're, they're almost, they, they, they're silly. So I don't know how we, if we were to have an alternate message, which I, again, I don't like the alternate messages because, again, I don't wanna, it's confusing enough. We got, you know, twenty items on this thing, and then they're gonna get to this spot, and now they're gonna have two things to choose from, and they're gonna probably be mentally exhausted by the time they get through all these cards. But if we were going to do something that contradicted that residency thing, I'm not sure how would we do that, City Attorney? How would we, if we say we do not want these restrictions? Or do we, if we say we wanna just stay where we were, how do we? How do we word something?
It's almost like you'd have to flip it to the opposite and say, and, again, the language, you just have to flip it so that it's a, it's, it's doing the opposite, so.
The Board of Commissioners does not, does not recommend this.
Right. Something to that effect.
Yeah.
Does not recommend a residency requirement or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to hear from their other commissioners whether they have a stomach to wanna do that. Yeah, I'm, I, I, I'll live with how this plays out. But if if there is an interest in opposing this, you know, I'd go along with it. But I'd like to hear from the other commissioners on this item.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Di Donato?
Well, I've pretty much stated how I felt. I, 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 I believe that they did a great job. I've said that. I just, twenty items is a lot, and that's why I offered up my help. And I know that that you gentlemen will do the same thing. The biggest hangup I had was the residency. But as I read it, the way they wrote it, there's still no, I mean, we can still excuse them if if there are extenuating circumstances. It doesn't say how many times it says that you can't do it longer than a year. I can live with that rather than than fight because, as Commissioner Colianis just said, we've already got twenty items. I mean, adding, adding another five or six kind of defeats our purpose. And and they worked hard diligently. And now, I, the way I read this residency thing, there is some, some flacks or flacks that we could still accommodate that established employee based on circumstances. So with that, I, I for one, unless the Board feels strongly, will go with what the charter view said.
Okay, and before I go to Commissioner Eisner, I just wanna say a couple of comments on. There was four of us when we were doing the review for each question, and when we came to the policy ones, it was all four of us that collectively said we thought these were policy decisions and should have been in. But at the same time, the CRC said, we, you know, we appreciate what you're saying, but we want it in the charter. So I I know we're, we're upset about that. I I don't want Brazilian tree peppers and invasive species in the charter. You know, I don't want sidewalk improvements that we already have a priority list and they're already set year by year, and they change in the the priority, you know. I understand it all, but the one thing I would, I would put a billboard up for is the residency. And I think we should try to at least come up with a question to combat that a little bit. I don't know if it's twenty miles distance or no distance at all, but I don't wanna have to worry about future boards. We're not this board, you know, what they're gonna do with the requirements from year to year. That's a big concern for me. And, you know, and, and how I spoke as a resident, coming up here, and, you know, I wanted everybody living in the city. But from what I know now and seeing how the city operates and where we're going as, you know, as city staff and looking out for the city, we gotta have some versatility, and we gotta be able to bring people here and and have some incentives for them to wanna be around. So I would like to see just one question. So I would like to see just one question that the BOC can present, something along the lines with residency. And if it's no limit or if it's a limit of 20 miles or 25 miles, if we could come to an agreement on that and potentially get the city attorney to write that up and present, that would be great. But that's the only one I want to bring forward because there are so many other questions out there that, you know, I just want to make sure we get the residents engaged. So those are my comments on everything.
Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. As I appreciate what Commissioner DiDonato said about having that loophole provided so that we could actually move the people for another year. It's almost like you're giving people a yearly review of whether they have a job or not. And for that matter, I, I, I just can't agree with that at all. You know, people that are devoted to do work here should be, have the surety that they have a job. And they shouldn't have to wait for a vote for us to extend their contract every year. It's like a yearly review. So thinking along those lines, I, I, I really don't want to do that. I know that I would be not feeling too comfortable having a yearly review of whether I have a job or not. I would like to know that I have a job unless I'm not doing the job properly. Not that, you know, that that is going to be a review because somebody doesn't like my breath mint. I mean, I, I, I just don't want that. So either they have the job or they don't. But I also wanted to clarify a comment for Commissioner Banther. As far as the internal auditor, the internal auditor is just giving the city attorney to review before providing, but they still will report to the board. So it, it was just a, as Commissioner Kulianis said, it was just one more step so that we didn't get ourselves into trouble. So we'd have, you know, it's like having a contract, anybody, any contract we make, we would have the attorney review it before it goes to us.
Makes sense.
So yes, it was, it was a good idea and pretty much like I said, I, I'm happy to discuss all of these, any of the things that I brought up at a future meeting. And you know, like I said, the residency is the biggest one for me as well. The others, you know, again, it becomes redundant. We have it in a policy and you know, do we need it in a charter? No, should we confuse the residents and give them an alternate to choose to not have it in the charter? That one we have to all decide as a board, so. And again, I thank them because like I said, I did watch every single meeting and they worked their tails off, so.
That's it. Thank you, Commissioner Eisner. We're going to go to Commissioner DiDonato?
I, I don't like talking more than once on a, on an item, but this, this is a perplexing idea. I, I for one, been, I've been here pretty much my whole adult life. There, there was a time almost, well, most of our employees lived in the city. That is no longer true and it's no longer true because they can't afford it. And that's just happened in about the last 20 years. Slowly it's worse and worse. In fact, I, I bought a home a little over four years ago and it's worth almost twice what I paid for. That's almost property value grown up now. We may get some lower assessments in May, so it may not be twice, almost twice as much. But there are certain circumstances, if someone is taking a promotion and they aren't quite ready to go and buy a new home and live in Tarpon Springs. That's a consideration and that's why I don't believe the residency requirement should be as big as it is. I could support one issue on that to change. However, I will say this psychologically and for my history in this community, maybe I shouldn't say it out loud, but I will. I think that if the two items oppose one another, that citizens will support the 10 year over a 20 year, or a 10 mile over a 20 mile. And I think they just do that logically, you want that people think they have to be close, not understanding the value of homes being almost doubled what they were in, in a very short time. So that's, that's why I'm saying that and, and again, a lot of these items are procedure items or policy items. And, but you know, if it makes everybody feel better, I'll support that. That's our dilemma and so I don't, you know, tell me what you think about it. I, I just think it's almost a lose-lose situation. I hate to say it that way, but.
Thank you, Commissioner DiDonato. Vice Mayor Kulianis?
Yeah, I, I would be, now that I hear from, from you other members here, that having an opposing item on the residency would be smart. Any, any miles you pick is going to be, you know, capricious and arbitrary, no matter what. You say 20, 18. Again, this gentleman here needs to be able to hire who he feels would be a good employee for the city. He's, he will make that decision about whether that person lives close enough for him to feel comfortable that they can come and do their job. I, I think this one period, year by year thing usurps him because what happens is he's supposed to hire these department heads, not the commission. But if we have to ratify them, so again, I use Ron Herring, so we, they would have to have 37 votes on Ron Herring every single year. The guy's been here 37 years. That's ridiculous. And so if a board got up and said, oh, I don't like Ron Herring, he doesn't, you know, genuflect enough when I walk up to the second floor. Then you've usurped his authority to hire who he wants and you've got now the board of commissioners ratifying employees that they should not have any authority over. We are, we are not the executives to run this city, he is. So again, I don't, I, I know they tried to throw us a bone by throwing in that one-year thing, but I think it actually is counterproductive. I think it, again, usurps his authority and I think it's inappropriate. So I definitely would, but if I wouldn't have any miles, let the man make a decision. Again, it can, we can create policy for him. We can say, as, as a board, we can create policy and say, you know, we, we would like to recommend that you never hire anybody who lives more than 20 mile, but not in the charter. It's like, like the mayor said, you know, this is the constitution. You don't micromanage in the constitution. It's, it's the overall structure of how we're supposed to function. You don't, these, this is over micromanaging and, and I, I don't, I just don't, I don't believe in it. So I would, I would be happy with an alternative that had no miles and let the city manager hire who heck he wants. Thank you.
Before we go to Commissioner Banther, we have a city attorney.
Thank you, just to add on to that. And again, I have not been part of these committees, this attorney Salzman. So I, I almost see this part as actually interfering with the administration, which is what it says. I mean, that's a, that's a very common part of a charter is that you all, this is a, you don't interfere with the administration. But to me, I would, if you had to, and we'd have to talk about this with Attorney Salzman as well, is that, you know, if you wanted to have it, say, the, the board of commission, the, the board of commissioners may, upon the request of the city manager, waive this requirement, period. And not have it, as you said, like an annual, you know, an annual thing where someone's, you know, so the city manager may come across someone that says, this is a great department head. This is a great director. I'm going to take the initiative to speak with the, the city commission and have asked for a waiver of that. I don't know if we could do it that way, but what concerns me about this part about is the, the one, one-time period not to exceed one year. I think you hit it on the head. It does, it does put a lot of pressure on someone. I think it almost interferes with the, the administration, to be honest with you.
Thank you for opining, city attorney Commissioner Banther?
Yes, there's some good points brought up. Obviously I, I've come in on the latter part of this, so I really am in agreement with a lot of, of what I've heard here tonight. And I would be in support of all these things or these concerns and the possible counter, counter question. I do worry about the residents of, not their ability, they're plenty smart enough to, but again, like, like we've been saying, it's a long ballot. You're going to have conflicting questions. They're not going to understand like, okay, this is the charter review committee's question, this is the city commission's, you know. We can, we can, we can work that out. I think this leads to a bigger discussion and it's a mute point for this CRC, but for future ones, I, and I think we need to, to, to kind of frame how we are doing the CRC. What's the purpose of the CRC per the charter? It, it's, it's like the constitution and I'm a pretty, I don't, I don't want to say politically, but overall a, a very conservative person when it comes to old documents, right? They were written for a reason. Now, doesn't mean there's not things that have to change as we go on, but we need to be very, very careful in, in, in what we change. Because you know, in my opinion, the CRC is established to review the document or to, or to, or to review the charter for, for not errors, but things that have to be updated and changed. Would the times or, or, or situations have happened that call for a change? That's, that's different than saying, well, I think this should be done this way. I have lots of opinions, probably half of which no one agrees with, right? And rightfully so. So I, I, I'm just, I, I think we should help the next CRC we, 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 though we sit and, and maybe the residents can use this too when, when they vote on these items is, was this a problem with the current charter? Did a problem come up to result in this recommendation? Or is this recommendation from, you know, more of a policy standpoint where, you know, someone thinks as a commissioner would, this should be done this way? And that might affect how, how you vote on that item. But I, I just wonder, was there this many errors and problems in the CRC? I mean, inside the charter, I don't know, maybe so. But it's, it's definitely a concern I have with the, with the, with the amount of recommendations we have in the sense of, you know, was there that many issues and problems we had with the charter? Or are these more policy things? And I think from me coming in here late and hearing you all tonight, you all did mention back and forth that there was, a lot of these were, were more, you know, policy driven. It's for the residents to choose and I don't think that's a bad thing. But I would recommend that when they look at these items, to keep that in mind, is this a policy thing? Or is this something that needs to be permanent in our constitution, you know, you know, like in our charter? That was something that has to be maintained going forward or, or, or for at least five years. Because what I don't think we, we, we want to see as a city is this ping pong every five years. We take things out, put things in, take things out, put things in. Because there's things in here, I'm not going to go in tonight, but they were specifically put in here. Well, when I was on the CRC five years ago, there was things specifically put on there for political reasons. I think we all know what that is, right? And I'm not saying it's completely bad and wrong, but are, are those the motives that we want? So I would encourage all of us and the public as well, when they vote, to keep that in mind when they're, when they're reviewing these, the, these, these, these decisions. Are these, are these, are the, are these recommendations? But I do believe there, the, the biggest issue that, that have been brought up is the, is the distance for directors to live and for the annual review process or the possibility of that person not, not having a job year to year. We can't, you're going to have a hard time retaining good employees tha, that way. They, they, they need, they need some more, they got, you can't just be somewhere for a year. You got to know that you, absent you making a mistake or the unforeseen happening, you have some longevity there. So I have concerns about, about that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Banther. City clerk, would you like to say something?
Yes, I just want for clarification and the attorney could correct me if I'm wrong. So basically, if you want a question on the residency, what you would have to let us know tonight is, so it's a two-part. If you're okay with the first part, it would stay as it is, there would not be an opposing question. On the second part, for all the department heads and directors, if you're, if you want, you would just basically have to let us know, do you just want to change the, you know, the mileage, the miles? Or do you just don't want no policy for department heads and directors, you know, any restrictions? And then the city attorney and I would go through and write an ordinance that would be, that would come back and we could also bring back the question prior to the 17th. It would be, you know, for the December 3rd meeting, that would, would state that when we come up with some language. And you would be able to, as long as we don't change the title, which is very basic. If you didn't like what the ordinance said or you wanted to change or add language, you could do so as long as it's before the second reading. Attorney could correct me if that's how he.
The only, I mean, one suggestion, and again, this would be a suggestion, is the opposite of this would be a question saying that the, all, all department heads and directors shall be hired at the discretion of the city manager regardless of residency distance.
I do have a question though, but would we have to, because currently it states certain people, so that would clarify that as well. That would clear that up and just the one question would, so would actually would get put in the charter if it, let's say, one got one over the other? So by doing that, would we have to amend what's there currently and, and state that in the question as well?
Could it say all other department heads?
Yeah.
You could do that. I mean, if the, I think, you know, I'd definitely like to talk to Attorney Salzman about this, but I mean, if, if the instruction is to develop an opposite question to consider by the public about the residency, the, the radius requirement, the 10 mile. Then that's, that's the instructions you give us and we not try to wordsmith it too much here tonight. But if, if you want that to go away, then we would have to put our heads together and draft something that would be opposite of requiring directors and department heads to be within 10 miles. So I was just thinking that it would be, you know, there's either no restriction or it's at the discretion of the city manager.
Okay. I, I would like to suggest, because I've heard, I think, five people say that they don't particularly like the way this is. If I'm wrong, tell me I'm wrong. But to simplify it, let's come up with, very similar to what our clerk said, an alternative that doesn't require the mileage scenario. And it, whether or not we tie the city, at city manager's discretion or not, which I agree, it should be his discretion. But just so that we might move along and if, if the powers that be, the clerk and the attorneys can get together and agree to the language, I think, I think you have an understanding of what we're trying to do. I think the clerk does and I, I believe Mr. Salzman does. So between that body, I would think we could come back on the third and, and then take care of it on, on the, we would have to come back for.
For a second reading?
Second reading. So I mean, that's, that's what I would suggest, but I don't know what the, for one, so.
Thank you, Commissioner DiDonato. I would just ask before I go back to Commissioner Eisner, we do this opposing question, it's either going to be what? 20 miles or no limits in the mileage, but I also ask, we talk about the verbiage. And can we as a board or in this verbiage rate that, you know, the board considers maybe that, you know, the way work and lifestyle is that, you know, directors living outside, you know, can provide just as much and contribute to the community, like the verbiage wise? Or why we were supporting the opposing question or?
So that.
Yeah, sure. To me, it's just like the, the voter is going to read this and then you want to, if you, if that's paragraph is something that you oppose as a commission, then we draft a second question that they're going to see right after that. And then the voter is going to be like, okay, clearly they're, they're saying, we're deciding whether this is up to the city manager and there's no distance requirements or they've got this distance requirements with a caveat in it.
And then can't we also explain that in our, whereas is in the ordinance?
Oh, for sure in the ordinance, yeah.
And we will also have, if y'all have a question, then there will also be a separate flyer that would also go out stating the facts of the. But your ordinance basically says.
Tells the story.
The why and what you, you want done. And then the question is separate. This question will come back because that has to be condensed.
Okay, so, all right, now we'll go to Commissioner Eisner and after him, I'd like to give a direction on what we're going to do or not. a direction on what we're gonna do or not do, so that way we can, uh, have a CRA meeting tonight and, uh, make sure we complete that. So, Mr. Eisner?
Thank you. So, um, as listening to all of the recommendations that went into the CRC, um, it always went to, uh, Attorney Salzman to write in all of what we're reading, any which way. So all we really need to do is relay to him what we as a board feel this should be. And I think it's best to allow him to construct something and come back with verbiage, as you were saying earlier, that, um, doesn't coincide with this, but con- contradicts this. According to the wording, how he thinks it should be put in, and then we just say yay or nay to it, of course. Um, but I, I don't think it should be something that we should try to come up with. Um, and, and that would solve it. But if that's the hill that we want to die on, so let's do that one. Um, you know, the others are just, you know, just putting extra stuff in. We have the ruling. Most of what I spoke about was already policy and they just wanna put it in the charter. I think it's gonna be making it more confusing, but so be it.
Yeah, no, okay. Um, thank you, Commissioner Eisner. So with that, this was the discussion. How does this board collectively want to move with the B O C, with the challenge question? Uh, Commissioner DiDonato, let you go first?
Are you, are you asking?
Am I like twenty miles, no miles?
Well, I, 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 number one, I, I think that both our attorney and our city clerk have said how we want to do it with just changing a few words in the second part of that. And that's what I think we should do. Change as little as possible, but open it up so that it's at the discretion of the city manager to hire and fire who he wants to hire and fire.
Okay, uh, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, no, um, I'm in favor of no mileage restrictions and the city manager hires and who he wants.
Okay.
So I don't know how, how that's worded legally is, uh, you know, up to the attorneys, but that's it.
No mileage up to the city manager.
Commissioner Banther?
Agreed.
I agree too. Uh, you have direction, sir? Perfect. Okay, uh, that, that is item tw- twenty-three. And now, that was item twenty-four, my apologies.
Attorney Dickman, do we need a motion on that or is it just as a consensus?
It said discussion, so I wasn't sure.
Cause we'll be bringing back.
I think that's instruction to, to staff to, to do something. So this is gonna be relayed to Attorney Salzman to draft something. I don't mind helping and jumping in, you know, more head someone, you know, it's that kind of thing, but yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, this is the agenda. That concludes the regular session agenda. We will now go to board and staff comments. Uh, staff comments, Police Chief Jeff Young.
I just want to pass my condolences on to the Kandotiakis family. Uh, yesterday attended, uh, Mrs. Kandotiakis, a long-term, longtime teacher out at Sunset Hills who retired, uh, passed away. She was beloved by the community, uh, knows that, knew her, everybody called her Mrs. Kay. And I think mayor, I think she was one of your teachers, wasn't she?
She was, yes.
I remember being in the class back then, so. Uh, but she'll be missed and truly loved.
Chief, uh, city attorney?
Yes, two things. Uh, I'm taking a two-week vacation. Uh, my number two here at the city in my firm is Sharon Linsner. Uh, she will be here on the second for the heritage board meeting and will be sitting here on the third for, with you all. She is very familiar with the city from an administrative point of view. She's been involved with all the various departments. Um, so you'll be in good hands with that. Uh, number two, with regard to this, the, the agreement, uh, for a city attorney, uh, assistance, uh, in talking with you all individually as your attorney and, and going over this, um, what should have been in here was an agreement that said I would be assistant city uh, attorney and Mr. Salzman would be the city attorney. So there's some, there's been some really valid, good points made to me in these conversations that I've been having. And I, I, I just want to emphasize that what I'm looking for is always a solution to a problem, because I think you have a really good opportunity here to have two really good law firms supporting the city. It's just working out that, the, the process and the, and how. And so I, I, I still want to continue those conversations with you all. Um, I'll, I'll go back and talk to Mr. Salzman about it. Um, and, and hopefully bring something back to you all. But I just want everyone to know that there's it, this, the status quo can stay as it is right now. You're not gonna be in any jeopardy. It's fine. I just want to work something out so that uh, it's clear, it's clean and, you know, and it makes sense. But I, I want to thank you all for giving me your points of view on it. They're all very good, very valid, very, very smart. Thank you.
Thank you, city attorney. Uh, City Clerk, Ms. Jacobs?
I have no comments. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager, Mr. Rudd?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the only thing I want to offer, uh, because of the time, I didn't know if you wanted to, I need at least an hour uh, for the CRA meeting. If we, you could do it at five o'clock on the third and, and we know we'd have to drop dead, stop time by six-thirty. The, the challenge with tag, the reason we tagged it on the end was just availability. So we wanted to have everyone here. You, your availability allows you to get here earlier. We could do it five and then be done by six-thirty. But I, I think the presentation and possibly your questions may take us an hour, hour and a half more.
I'd move it.
I'd move it, yes. It's, you can't think this straight. I mean, it's not fair, I think, to the CRA.
Like make sure everyone's.
Yeah, I agree.
That could be the third, with that work at, at five o'clock for everyone.
Runner, no concerns with like, with, with, with like noticing that or that we establish it tonight, right, attorney?
I mean, I don't, I don't think you have any problems with rescheduling this for, what would you say, five, did you say five-thirty, five, an hour ahead or five?
Five o'clock.
Five and then take a little break and then start the meeting.
Take a break before the six-thirty.
Yeah, you can, uh, I think you can call the CRA the same way you can call the city commission, like twenty-four hour notice, that kind of thing.
That is correct. Do we need to open up that meeting and make a motion from the CRA at that time?
Oh, like here tonight?
Yes.
Open it up and have them continue it. That, that might be a smart way to do it. So that it doesn't reav- you know, doesn't affect any re-advertisements. That'll take just a minute or two.
Thank you, city manager. Uh, we're now going to board comments. Uh, Commissioner Banther?
Yes, thank you. Um, first off, I, it's been really nice to get to know this board as a whole and there's, I think today there was some very good discussions and it's helped me as well, get me up to speed with what's going on. So I, I do appreciate the board explaining things and uh, you all, you all have some very good input. Thank you. Uh, um, uh, Charles, could you please have the internal auditor email me and of course copy the board? That's fine. I want to know what they're, what they're, what they're, what they're, uh, what they're currently working on. Okay, and, and I assume, you know, that, and, and also how we and, and what's the, uh, the, um, appropriate way for me or any commissioner to, to give them stuff to do? How does that work? All right, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner DiDonato?
I just would like to repeat, I'm looking forward to our policies and procedures time, whenever that is, Mr. City Manager. So I think we have several items to, to look at on that minute. We, we put it off almost a year now. Get it done. That's all. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. So I did have a conversation with, uh, our assistant city attorney. And, uh, what, what I brought up to him was the fact that in, and that's why you have this form in front of you of the charter. As I asked Irene to, uh, put that out there, because in our charter, we do not have any title of assistant attorney. So, meaning he would now, if we signed the contract as it's written, he would not be actually reporting to us because he wouldn't be a charter official. So he would be reporting to our city manager. So I saw this as confuse, confusing. And every question that I asked just started to get us even more confusing. He's complimenting me, good question, but I don't have an answer to that. And I'm like, well, I need an answer to that, otherwise I'm gonna give you more confusing questions. Cause, so that's why this whole thing was brought up. Um, you know, we need to know who's he's reporting to because literally either he's then going to report to the city manager or he's got to report to Salzman. Uh, you know, and that's not how I thought this was gonna come about. So that was the one thing that I, we spoke about. Um, the other thing I did want to make, uh, a second announcement, I did want to thank, uh, our mayor. I, I really appreciated how you handled yourself in the shade meeting. You did an excellent job and, uh, you know, I, I was very appreciative in your comments and your thoughts and your questions. And I, I think you did a really good job and you helped move the city forward. So I, I did want to make that a public announcement that I, I was very impressed with what you did. So, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Eisner. Thank you.
And last but not least, not only did I turn seventy this past week, which I am now an old man. So if you see me stumble, they say if I stumble and you laugh, I'm still a young guy. If you come running to my aid, that makes me an old person. So if I stumble, you better be laughing. Okay, that's one thing. Um, number two, this week I also had a granddaughter. My second granddaughter was born at six pounds, nineteen ounces and, uh, it was very emotional. My daughter had a tough, uh, birth on the first. This one was delightful and, uh, I, I am, my heart is just bursting with, with just joy and love and, uh, you know, it, it, it was just, it's probably one of the best feelings that you could possibly have. Um, so I do want to wish my daughter, son-in-law and, uh, my two dau- granddaughters um, the best and the healthy life. And I swore to my daughter, I will not trip over my second granddaughter's high chair and break my other Achilles tendon like I did the first time. So I will walk wisely this time. So that's all I really want to share and I, I just thank everybody's, you know, contribution. Um, I, I hope that the, uh, the CRC didn't get offended by anything we said. Um, I know they did some great work. Um, they all participated. I thought it was such a great blend of people. Um, it was great ideas. I, I would like to see a few less things go on, but, uh, I accept it all and I just thank them all for their hard work.
Thank you, Commissioner Eisner. Uh, Vice Mayor Kulianis?
I'm, I am happy that our city attorneys are, have worked out, uh, the little kinks and, uh, because it's really nice having, uh, the, uh, representation we have and, and, uh, and having two firms and all their resources is, is, is a really good thing. Yeah, I, I want to, you know, wish, uh, and, and pass along condolences for Pam Kandotiakis, uh, just just a sweet lady, always, uh, had a smile on her face and just, uh, a really, uh, important person in our community. Um, also Dan Chulu, uh, we lost him last week and uh, a long-time Rotarian and, and, uh, also a staple of our community as well. The, uh, it's nice having you, David. I, I, I enjoy seeing you down there. So, welcome. I, I, I don't know if I said it the last time you were here, but. Um, and then just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Um, you know, we've gone through a lot. We need to take a break and enjoy ourselves and, uh, I'm glad the employees maybe all get a little, an extra day off. Uh, they can unwind and enjoy the holidays as well. So, uh, that's it. Wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I will be in New York City this year. Uh, I was there last year and I saw the Tarpon Springs Band. Um, they won't be there this year, but, uh, so it won't be quite as eventful as it was last year, but um, I'll be looking, uh, watching the parade that everybody else will be watching on TV. So but you probably have a better view than I'll have. So, but thank you.
Thank you. Uh, just, uh, first I, I want to, as Commissioner DiDonato brought up about policies and procedures, I'm hoping that does come up soon in the future. And as I was going to the charter telling them, hey, I, I'd like to have once a year, you know, board get together with projects that we could send out for earmarking for budget seasons for these, you know, our other state and local federal officials. So I'm hoping we can get that memorialized and policy for rules and procedures. Um, that would be great. Uh, condol- my condolences go out to the Kandotiakis family, thinking about the Opah Delee, Terry, Kiki, Stacy and Michael and, and the whole Kandotiakis family. Uh, the Pam was a, they're in the community, a great teacher. You know, and, and so we're, we're thinking about her as well as, uh, Rotarian Dan Chulu, he was great to the community too. And, uh, you know, it's, it's just wish him and his family, um, the best and just thinking about them all. This board is jelling, no matter what. I know we have our differences at times. I know, you know, came together in, in a, you know, unexpected way, but this board is jelling. We, we're coming up with ideas, we're working together and um, it's good to see. And I'd also, Police Chief, I'd, I have to ask a favor. I'm getting a lot of requests from officers of, just to please consider, I don't know, he has no idea, cause I caught him off guard with this. Uh, the, the beards, you already know. So someone's coming to you and saying something, so just, just please consider it in the future for some of them. And, you know, it's tough shaving your face every day. So just something to consider, sir. And, uh, this whole board, we wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Please enjoy it with your family, friends and loved ones. Uh, it's truly, uh, this time of the year is all about coming together and appreciating everything we have. And, uh, you know, just being thankful for it all. So with that said, uh, this concludes the regular session meeting. The meeting is I'm sorry, Commissioner Eisner?
Yes, I did want to remind the board and, uh, our clerk that we also had to make a decision. Um, coming before Forward Pinellas with that overpass that's coming up, it would have to be a vote for a referendum. Am I correct? Or?
Um, the city manager might want to speak additionally, but from my understanding that it is not, doesn't have to be on this. Uh, Renee has gotten with the director and it doesn't have to be on this election because they, with the storms and all, they didn't do the town meetings and things that they were supposed to do for education. And they can start that and it could go on. If we did the November election next year, it would be a standalone election, but we would still have time, plenty of time to do it next March of twenty-six on that election. Um, and then there would be no additional cost because we're having an election anyway to the city. And I don't know if the city manager wants to add anything from my understanding.
Correct, that's it. We, it, the, the storm threw off the schedule to make the March election. And since, uh, construction's not funded and so far out, they, they, they feel confident we can, we could do uh, you, the November of next, of twenty-five or March of twenty-six with a, an item on the agenda.
Cause I have the, I have a meeting, a meet and greet coming up in December and then I know we have our first, uh, real, uh, Forward Pinellas meeting in, uh, January. So I just wanted, I didn't want to go in there and, you know, not have a clue of what we're doing. So as long as there's a plan, I'll go with it.
Awesome. Okay, that's it. Thank you. Okay, uh, Commissioner Banther?
Yes, that's a, that, thank you for bringing that up, um, a- a- about the overpass. I need to educate myself more on the process we're doing to help. I'm not sure if you can stop it, but whatever. But it, it does work when we speak up to the county and officials. It was, I don't know, it was early in my first term in twenty thirteen, they wanted to put, the county wanted to put a fixed span bridge by, by, by the yacht club that would involve eminent domain on both sides. And it was being slipped through like nothing you've ever seen. I blew the whistle on it, some others did too. We forced the county commissioners to get out their GPSs and find Tarpon Springs. They, they met us at the yacht club and it got killed. The, now the bridge still has to get replaced, but it's getting replaced in a more respectable manner. So it does work. You know, not always what we want in the end, but we have to hold the county and state, not accountable, they're doing their job, but let them know our opinions and thoughts. So I, I was glad to hear that. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Banther. Without us fighting, we wouldn't have gained an extra seat for Board Pinellas. So, you know, uh, Commissioner Eisner's been at every one of those meetings. So um, it's, it's, it's great to see what we can all together as a board do when we gel. This concludes the regular session meeting. The meeting is adjourned at nine thirty-five PM. Thank you. Oh, yes, now, please don't leave. We have to do the CRA special, uh, special session. Oh, yes. Now, please don't leave. We have to do the CRA special, uh, special session. I T, are you ready? I now call to order the special session agenda for the Community Redevelopment Agency meeting of the city of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four at nine thirty-six P M. Uh, City Clerk, roll call, please.
Chair Kulias?
Here.
Vice Chair Kulianis?
Oh, here.
Commissioner Eisner?
Here.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Here.
Commissioner Banther?
Here.
Okay, uh, there's only one agenda item and that is to review and direction on updating redevelopment plan, downtown master plan and, uh, this chair will entertain a motion to defer the item to, was it December? This, December?
Third.
Third, at five P M.
So moved.
Second. There are no further comments. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kulianis?
Yes.
Chair Kulias?
Yes. Uh, that concludes the special session agenda. We will now, we will now go to board and staff comments. Uh, Police Chief?
Uh, just rest in peace, Dan Chula, I did.
City Attorney?
Nothing.
City Clerk?
Uh, I have none. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, City Manager?
Nothing. Thank you.
Commissioner Banther?
No.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Nope.
Commissioner Eisner?
Nope.
Vice Mayor? And I have, uh, I have no comments either. This concludes the special session meeting adjourned at nine thirty-seven P M.